Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Wednesday, April 1st, 2020 Citrus School Committee meeting to order. We are having this meeting mostly remote in the Board of Selectmen's room due to the, in response to Governor Baker's declaration of a public health emergency and the related emergency executive order dated March 12th, 2020, all town of Citrus Public meetings shall be remote until further notice. This meeting will be recorded by Citrus Community Television. It can be viewed live on cable television, Channel 9, and will be accessible after tonight on YouTube. There are two public comment sections in tonight's agenda. Public comments will be available by audio conference bridge. If you wish to call in via audio conference, you can do so by dialing the three numbers that were put onto our agenda. They are 425-436-6308, 425-436-6338, or 425-436-62300. The access code to get into the meeting is 817-651-POUND. At this time, I would like to take a roll call vote to begin tonight's school committee meeting. Janice Limblom?
Here, President.
Peter Gates?
Peter's here.
Nicole Brandalini?
Here.
Mike Hayes is here.
And Mike Long is here. What I would like to do before we start the agenda is just have a moment of silence for Joe Norton. As many know, he passed away not too long ago and had a major impact on the town. He was a member of the Board of Selectmen and numerous other committees and boards throughout his time. So this time, I'd like to take a quick moment of silence for him. So I will be chairing this meeting tonight, just because Janice Limblom is calling in over the phone. She did prepare a statement that I did want to read on behalf of the school committee. So just want to thank everybody for joining us for the first live meeting of the Citrus School Committee. We want to thank SCTV, the staff at Town Hall for assisting us in this new format. And as we work through this unique situation, we do appreciate all of the patience that the town has shown as we work through this. There have been a number of questions and comments coming in from the town, and as we try to work through this unheralded situation, we do appreciate your patience. Our staff has done an amazing job of reaching out over the course of the past couple of weeks since we have been remote, either just saying hi to their students and wishing them well, or starting to offer some of the educational support that they would have had when they're in school. This is a first go with this method of conducting a meeting like this. There'll certainly be some glitches and bumps along the way. Tonight, the superintendent will give an update on what the next steps are for distance learning for Citrus Public Schools. We do want to thank the DC, CC, STA, and the CO staff who have coordinated their efforts in putting a plan in place that will allow the children in this town to continue their education in this new normal that we will roll out tonight and start on April 6th. The staff across all of our schools continue to demonstrate their dedication to the students, and we have been extremely appreciative of all the work the staff has done, as well as the people that have come into the offices, whether it's from food services or the custodians, and continuing to work for not only our staff, but for our students as well. The school committee asks that we continue to follow state guidelines on social distancing and only leaving our home if absolutely necessary. It's a difficult situation that we're in, but it's important that for our kids that are stuck at home, we cannot stress this enough. At the end of the day, what we want more than anything else is for our students and our staff to be safe and healthy, as well as our entire community. At times like this, while education is important for our students, keeping ourselves healthy in wall is also just as important. So at this time, I'm going to go back to the agenda for tonight's meeting, unless anyone else from the school committee had anything that they wanted to add. So next up on the agenda for tonight's meeting was the acceptance of minutes. So we have minutes from the February 1st, 2020 meeting and February 10th, 2020 meeting.
Can I make that motion, since I wasn't present at the meeting?
Which one?
I wasn't at the February 1st meeting.
Mike or Peter, if you were at the February 1st or February 10th meeting, do you mind making a motion for those minutes, unless there are any questions from the Board?
February 1st was just with the, regarding the budget, the public hearing on the budget. So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from the February 1st school budget public hearing meeting.
Second.
Mike Hayes, I'll second.
Janice Limblom?
So we'll take a roll call. Long, yes?
Want to do roll calls?
Yep.
Janice, yes.
Nicole?
Brandalini, yes?
Mike Hayes abstaining, I was not there.
Okay. So Long, yes?
Yes.
Okay. You got that?
Do we need to do February 10th as well?
Yeah, we need to do February 10th as well.
Okay, I totally made a mistake. My dates are scrambled. It was March that I wasn't at. But that's okay. Make a motion to accept the January 10th school committee minutes?
I'll second that. So we'll take a roll call vote.
Hayes, I'll second.
Brandalini, yes?
Long, yes?
Yes.
Limblom, yes?
Who's on first?
Hayes abstaining, I was not there.
So now that that is done, the next item on the agenda is the leadership report from Superintendent Griffin.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for your flexibility in having this meeting remotely. We've got a couple of big items to talk about in the leadership report, but I first just want to take a moment to recognize that the SPS staff, the entire crew, there's 518 employees in Citrus Public Schools, and over the past few weeks, just like all of our families and students, they've been wrestling with COVID-19 in their homes as well, and, you know, dealing with this new normal and all the new changes that have really just shifted the fabric of our society, and despite all of that, have just gone above and beyond to support this community. They've showed compassion, they've worked closely together, and ultimately, they've just showed a commitment to our kids and our students and our schools. A few highlights, if I can, just if you'd be kind enough to humor me here for a few minutes. First, a thank you to our educational staff. It's both our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our special educators, our related service psychologists, adjustment counselors, school principals, you know, curriculum coordinators, the list goes on. Over the past few weeks, they have had to reinvent and recreate education through a remote distance model and been providing enrichment opportunities for kids pre-K to 12. We're excited to be ramping up to distance learning in a structured form starting on Monday, but just proud of the work that they've done, really going above and beyond to balance their lives as parents and, you know, adults in their own right, as well as supporting all of our kids here in Citrus. I also want to take a moment to thank our tech team. They have passed out over 200 Chromebooks to students and families in our community, and they're now in the process of running workshops for our staff on a variety of different platforms as we ramp up for distance learning. Also, our food services staff, really from day one, so again, if you think back a few weeks, Citrus, along with a number of school districts in the southeastern Massachusetts region, came together as a group of superintendents and realized the scope and severity of this situation, and we chose to close schools as a region prior to the governor closing longer term. Literally on day one of that, our food services team sprang into action. They were evaluating the foods that we currently had that had been planned for the week and started immediately working on distributing that food to families in need here in Citrus, and continue to do so to this day with the curbside pickup. Our custodians, our bus drivers, our driving staff in general, all the way up through the closure, had been cleaning buses and vans and buildings as best as they can, 24/7. We're appreciative of their incredible work. Our administrative assistants had been, you know, juggling all of the new information coming out from myself, from central office, from the state, from the community, from the feds, and trying to get that out to families and get it out to staff in a reasonable time. They were incredible in sort of coordinating all of our efforts at the school levels. I also want to thank our nurses, in particular, our nurse leader, Ms. Kelly Roach. Again, the nurses were really on the front lines of this from day one, helping work with families directly, those families who are directly affected, as well as families of students who would be most vulnerable if, in fact, they were exposed. And they worked with health officials locally, through the state, through the feds, and really served as our experts. Ms. Roach in particular, this community is fortunate to have a nurse leader like her. The professionalism, the expertise, and the communication from her has been just outstanding. Lastly, I just want to name that, you know, in the midst of a challenge like this, I like to focus in on what our primary goal is, right? We think about our mission's really one statement, we graduate well-rounded adults who are global citizens with the skills and passion to make an impact on the world. Like, that's, one sentence is what we're all about. And while that's going to change the way we do that, our mission remains the same, and in fact, we've got to redouble our commitment to it. Over the past couple of weeks, again, 518 professionals have been reevaluating how they do their work so that we can still provide services to students and so we can still continue to push that mission to help our kids become good adults. So I just want to thank our entire team for that. We've got a lot on our agenda, but I appreciate you giving me a few minutes to say that. Leadership reports, a couple of items for you on this. So we'll start with sort of buckets of information here. Curriculum instruction assessment, when it comes to enrichment, that'll continue through April 3rd. Some classes focused in sharing a variety of different materials through different media. Distance learning will kick off formally with a structured model that we'll talk a little bit more about in the agenda today, starting on April 6th. Special education, Ms. Mullin's going to share a little about special education in a moment. I just want to take a moment to recognize her incredible work and the work of her team. Special education students have been sometimes the most affected when we think about distance learning, because to modify learning in and of itself on a regular basis can be challenging. To do that through a distance model is even more challenging. Ms. Mullin put together some information for us that I'll just share, and Ms. Mullin, feel free to add anything if you'd like as well. Related services have already begun working with families. They started really as closures began. They've been using some of the same platforms a lot of our educators have, the Zooms, the class dojos, and Google classrooms. And students that have received accommodated lessons for a variety of reasons, depending on their disability, have gotten that through our related services staff. Ms. Mullin, anything you want to add regarding the special education staff over the past few weeks?
Absolutely. So, yes, all of our special educators have connected with their students, their families. They have all been providing from the ghetto, modified accommodated lessons, and achieving lessons for the IEP goals and benchmarks. So they've already started this learning plan before we even got it all finalized on paper, which was phenomenal. I finished all the Zoom meetings today and yesterday with all the six buildings and the principals and special ed faculty to go over questions for the learning plan. So when we delve deeper into that and if you have questions further about how special education is involved in this, I'm more than happy to respond.
Thank you, Diana. I already talked about operations. Starting next week, custodians will be returning back to the schools in a limited capacity to just continue working on our cleaning and along with some small projects throughout the buildings. Couple of highlights from the different levels in our schools, from the secondary level, some things that I think are apropos for the committee. College Board will be doing advanced placement online this year and offering some online support tutorials for students. We're tapping into those resources now. SATs canceled the May date, and students are being issued refunds direct with the College Board. ACT has currently rescheduled its April 4th test to June 13th, but they've been very clear with the disclaimer that that may be subject to change as well. The high school principal search continues. It was delayed a few days, given the pandemic, but we're planning to meet an annoying meeting virtually, similar to all of this, tomorrow. Events and trips, again, high level. Both the Association of School Principals and the Association of Superintendents in Massachusetts have continued our unified effort to advocate that all travel companies that schools have been working with over the past several months reimburse for those costs for canceled or rescheduled trips. We've sent out a number of different joint letters and joint statements from all of our groups to try to encourage those organizations to do exactly that. There's been no formal movement yet, and our advocacy has also continued to the legislature as well at this time. Well, we had lots of questions about a variety of trips that the community has been hoping and excited to be taking. Some of them are canceled, the others are postponed or indefinitely postponed. Again, if the committee has questions about specific ones, we can go into those. The legislative update is especially apropos for today. As I'm sure you're aware, Governor Baker's already filed emergency legislation, a number of emergency legislations. There's a few that are apropos for education in particular that the Commissioner of Education has advocated for. The current legislation that I believe was taken up today at Beacon Hill has three elements that are important to education in Massachusetts. The first is that it would empower the Commissioner of DESI essentially to delay beyond April 1, a requirement for submitting the Student Opportunity Act plans that we'll be talking about later today. Communities can certainly still approve those plans, but he's asked that school districts and superintendents hold off on submitting anything to DESI directly until the legislature acts on this. The second part of legislation is to authorize the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education, obviously upon recommendation of the Commissioner, to waive requirements for the competency determination for high school students. The CED or competency determination is essentially that high school students must pass MCAS. There's a variety of requirements there, but that's the long and short of it. We'll wait to hear back from the legislation on that. We expect to hear back either the end of this week or early next. And finally, that the legislation will authorize the Commissioner to waive or modify the requirements for annual state testing, or MCAS. Again, I'm sure you've seen already that MCAS dates that we should be having now, obviously postponed, potentially indefinitely, and we expect to hear back from the legislature and again from the Commissioner, and to this week, early next.
Ron, could I add one thing about MCAS in there?
Absolutely.
So as it relates to special education, we were given guidance from Associate Commissioner Russell Johnson that the old MCAS was postponed for the time being, but we hope to get more guidance on that. So parents shouldn't and teachers shouldn't worry about the old MCAS deadline that was coming up.
Well said. Thank you, Ms. Mullin. You see the DESI update there in your backup, I won't read it to you. Again, it reiterates some of the same things in the legislature. A lot of what DESI would give you regulatory guidance on first has to be acted on upon the legislature before they can give you regulatory guidance. We're waiting to hear that. I guess the last thing I would just say with our legislature, I just want to take a moment to thank our local representatives. They have obviously also been working through the same challenges we have as parents, as family members, and still simultaneously trying to do the business of the state. So we're appreciative of the work that they've been doing on Beacon Hill to try to respond to the myriad of questions and wrinkles that COVID-19 has created. Some future items for the school committee to consider that are related to COVID-19. The first is local fees for service, so bus fees and full-day kindergarten and ECC and athletics and parking. I'd encourage the committee at our next meeting to have some discussion about how we want to handle that. Obviously, April vacation, you should know that DESI is now working on some guidance regarding April vacation, but ultimately, the calendar is a local decision. So to have April vacation or not is a local decision that each school committee in the Commonwealth will have to make. And then some authorization to renegotiate some external contracts. So for example, we have some bus contracts that are external for Metco, as an example. Most of our buses are internal, but we do external contracts there. At this time, we're still paying those contracts, but those organizations are paying for fuel, for example. So is there a way to renegotiate a reduced rate for the taxpayers while still supporting an organization that you're going to need when we return back to normalcy? So I'd like to put those on the radar of the committee for our next meeting, and I'm sure there'll be others as we continue on our meeting. That's your leadership report. I know it went a little bit long, but a lot going on recently. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I have two for you, Ron. So in terms of graduation, are we looking at moving the date at all currently, or are we waiting on further information from DESI before we start looking at the date?
That's second thing. We're waiting on some further guidance, both for graduation requirements and potential dates.
I know a lot of people in town are wondering, you know, are we moving the date? Are we keeping it where it is? So I just want to make sure that we stay on top of that with our, the people that could be impacted, either traveling or, you know, just planning.
Absolutely. It's definitely on our radar for sure. We've heard that DESI is going to be giving some further guidance regarding high school graduation and graduation requirements for our students. So just like what we did with the distance learning, we're trying to pull a nice, comprehensive package of information. We don't have all of that just yet, but once we do, we'll be sure to get it out.
And in terms of April vacation, so is that something that we could, and we're not looking to do anything with April vacation tonight, but is there, I mean, would we have to wait for anything from the state to then turn around and cancel April vacation, or could we have a meeting next week and just?
Yep. It's completely within the authority and scope of a school committee. You're not required to get guidance on that, and there's no law that requires you to have April vacation or not have April vacation. That said, I appreciate, you know, one of the things that I've been appreciative of is the governor and the commissioners' leadership in helping unify the Commonwealth around decisions, so school closures and those sorts of things. And I would encourage the committee to consider the guidance from DESI, but ultimately, it's your decision entirely.
What was the guidance from DESI? So what did?
Not yet. They say they're going to issue some guidance shortly. We've been back and forth as superintendents with DESI on this, just this topic, yesterday and today, and so we expect that we'll get some guidance at the end of this week, early next week the latest.
Okay.
But just to be clear, it wouldn't change the authority necessarily, it would just be a recommendation.
I think, I know parents have a lot of questions about specifics to refunds for trips, and I think it's that frustration of there just aren't answers out there yet for that, and there's so many little pieces to those puzzles that have to respond to inquiry and to give an answer. So I think we'll probably get some questions about that. But any further, I mean, you've kind of already answered it, but is there's any other updates about refunds for specifically like the big ones, you know, the Disney one?
The banned ones and those things. I was talking with Mr. Thomas just the other day, who's just been incredible, back and forth with these organizations and with our families and trying to balance the needs there. We haven't landed on something yet. One of the things I've cautioned our team in is that it would be beneficial to go a little slowly with this, because if all of the other organizations, like the Superintendents' Association and school associations-
Right.
-are also working on our behalf-
Strengthen numbers.
-we wouldn't want to land on a negotiated settlement and then have something potentially better for our communities that come out more comprehensively at a state or at a national level. Again, I have no inside information on that. That's just, you know, being prudent. I appreciate everyone's itching to get some information about, are we going, are we not going, how much money do I get back? But I think at this moment, it's beneficial to try to see if the advocacy does its work.
So is there a breakdown of where we're at for refunds from the airline, or has there, there's just no information yet, or is there?
No, there's quite a lot of information. It's different depending on the trip, and so I don't know if maybe this is the moment to kind of go through every single trip, but I would say two things. One is that the model that we've taken so far has been pretty effective, that is, at a district level, we send out communication about trips that have been postponed or indefinitely postponed or canceled, and then immediately after, we've coordinated with the coordinator of the trip to send out detailed information to their constituency and their participants. Oh, hey, this has been indefinitely postponed, here's where we stand right now with our bus agency or the tickets to this place that we were going. In some cases, they've landed on an agreed settlement, in other cases, not yet, but I think it's beneficial to let the participants and the coordinator kind of work out the individual details of their particular trip, just like we normally would when they're doing the trip to start, you know?
So families are in the loop on where the process is, as it?
Depending on each trip, they absolutely are. And again, each trip may be in a different place, but they're informed about where that is.
And I can say for Bourndale, 10 minutes after we got the update from the superintendent Saturday afternoon, I got an update on Bourndale with the sixth grade setting a good expectation with parents and being as communicative as possible. So at least from what I've seen, teachers have, or the trip coordinators have done a good job of, you know, reaching out to the impacted families.
Yeah, we try to layer the communications so before anything comes out from my office, we're in contact with all the, anybody who was affected, who was leading a trip or leading the school or program, whatever it might be, and we coordinate some communication that'll go out in a layer. And I think that's been a, it's challenging to get all this information, but I think it's a helpful way to layer the information. General information for the public and then specific to the constituents that way, the general public isn't inundated with like a Bourndale information if their kiddo's not going to Bourndale.
Mike, did you have something you wanted to add?
Well, yeah, I wanted to ask, I know there's been some impact bargaining going on with the FDA and other units, and are those concluded, or will they be concluded before distance learning starts on Monday?
They are concluded, and one of the things that we talked about with the groups that sort of signed the letter, and you guys see, you guys have an advanced copy of it, we landed on sort of unified communication. Some school districts have done MOAs, some school districts have done this model. It's about 50/50 in the Commonwealth, according to some of my colleagues. You know, we do a, superintendents are always on email with like a group of us together. And so we appreciate the unified communication. I think it demonstrates to our community that the school district and the labor groups are on the same page about what the model will look like for kids and what the working condition will look like for the adults providing supports to kiddos. So in your document that you see, that families will get it about, you know, 8:30 tomorrow morning, you'll see the introductory letter signed by all three, all four organizations, the school district and three of the educational labor groups.
And that is not something the school committee needs to vote on?
It is not. Only in MOA or MOU, and again, that is one option that school districts can do, and about half have done that approach, and the other half have done the approach that Citrus is doing.
Great, thank you. This is Peter. I have a quick question. Do we have any other trips that are scheduled in the summer that we need to consider discussing?
The short answer is not at this time. We don't typically have a lot of trips in the summer. We do have some ramp up the trips that, and exchanges that happen in the fall, but I think it'd be premature right now to give you any further information on those, as they're, they're really in the early stages right now. Our primary focus has been launching distance learning.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. If there's no other questions, we'll move to the next item on the agenda in Old Business, which is policy, a second reading of Policy DO, the Special Education Reserve Fund.
Again, you've got the backup there for the Special Education Reserve Fund. I'll take just a moment, because we talked a little bit about it on the March 2nd meeting. The purpose of the Special Education Reserve Fund is to set aside resources for future situations in which you have unanticipated or significant spikes, increases in your out-of-district costs. You can see the line items that are articulated there. Those are the line items that are usually the most volatile in a school district. Ours has no exception to that. This year's budget was certainly affected by fluctuations in out-of-district special education costs, and the purpose of this reserve fund will be to set aside funds for the future that could be tapped if, in fact, you have those fluctuations again.
Anyone on the phone, did you have any questions or concerns with voting on this policy tonight? If not, I'll entertain them.
I don't have any questions. You know, I think it's a long time coming, and I'm glad we're moving forward with it.
I agree.
Yeah, no, I think this will be a huge benefit for the town and for the district moving on over the next couple of years.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion?
Michael, I cannot hear you a word you're saying.
Can you hear me now?
A little better.
All right, I'll speak up. If there's no other questions, then Nicole, do you want to make the motion?
Sure. Move to approve Policy DO, Special Education Reserve Fund as written.
Second, Mike Hayes second.
Okay. All right, so we'll take a roll call vote on this policy. Peter?
Limblom, yes.
Long, yes? Nicole?
Brandalini, yes?
All right. Thank you, everybody. Moving along in the agenda is a discussion on the Student Opportunity Act Plan.
So again, you've got the backup there. I'll give you just a quick summary. We talked a little bit about this also on our March 2nd meeting. As part of the Student Opportunity Act, one component of that legislation requires that school districts submit to the Commissioner of Education plans that essentially utilize funds to support one or more subgroups, that is disproportionately low-performing or historically under-served groups within the community. Our plan targets students with disabilities and articulates several areas and programs that we are interested in investing in now and over the next few years to support those students and help them make gains, both to access the curriculum and to make effective progress in the curriculum. We discussed this plan at the March 2nd meeting. This is your opportunity to vote on it. And again, I would just note that the Commissioner has currently stated that we, if it's voted tonight, we would hold off on formally submitting it to DESI until we get guidance from them, which would ultimately be some passage of legislation to provide extension. Okay?
From the- From the people on the phone, are there any questions on this plan?
I recall, I recall that this was a great document, I just, not seeing in our backup, I just see two memos, I'm not sure if that's correct.
It is not. No, it is not. Now, your backup does have two memos, and the plan is not there. We did have it on the March 2. We can postpone...
I thought it was great, I thought it was fantastic, I just want to make sure, just want to revisit it again before we voted on it, but...
Do you all, Mr. Long, if you don't mind, if I could interject for a moment, if you, if the committee has access to your X drive, I can take that plan and put it there for you. It's, again, the identical plan from, from March 2, I think it was just an error in, like, dragging the files over to share with you. Mr. Long, Ms. Brandalina, just like, does that make sense for you?
Nope, that's fine, and if, the people on the phone, if you just go to the March 2 folder, you should be able to pull up the plan.
Thank you, that's even better.
Yeah, looking at it, I found it.
That's so much easier. Thank you for that, Mr. Long.
Save you. 20 seconds to your life.
Yep. Yeah, it's right there, your March 2 folder.
Yeah.
Thank you, my apologies for the drag and drop there.
Well, I have a question, if the deadline is delayed, would you, do you foresee any, like, adjustments to this plan if we vote?
No, it's a great question, it's the reason that I encourage it to be, you know, to have it on the agenda. If they delay it by a day, or a month, or a year, the plan would still be the same, right? I mean, our focal point in our school district should be students with disabilities, the funds should still go to, you know, investing in mathematics curriculum, it should still continue to go to things like, you know, expanding social-emotional specialized programs at the Gates Middle School, in your therapeutic program, so, so the kinds of things that we'd want to do are still the same things. Frankly, this is more of a bureaucratic, maybe too strong a word, this is a regulatory submission date that may be extended, but the vision and the effort that we would have here in Situit would remain the same.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else?
Do you have any questions?
Move to approve the Student Opportunities Act Plan as presented by Superintendent Griffin.
All right, I'll second it.
Do you second?
Who's on first?
You tried.
All right. I'll take a roll call vote, long yes.
Brandalina, yes.
Long yes.
Gates, yes.
Okay. Thank you, everybody.
Okay.
Okay, so, moving on in the agenda to Old Business, the first item on the agenda is the 2020-2021 School Calendar Review and Calendar Options. So, there are two options currently before the school committee tonight, one option is to start before Labor Day, we would go back the Wednesday before Labor Day, students would attend school Wednesday and Thursday, have Friday off, and then start back again the Tuesday right after Labor Day. And the second option is to start the day right after Labor Day. I know we offered a survey out to the community before the COVID-19 situation occurred, but we do, this is about the time of, time every year that we do vote on the calendar, and I know some families are anxious to find out when we, when school will start for the 2020-2021 year. So, before we vote, turn it over to anyone on the phone. Mike, do you have any questions on the calendar before we entertain a motion?
No, no, I don't. I would say that my vote would be to remain starting after Labor Day.
I have, this is Peter, I want to, are we, technically, are we voting on the entire calendar, or are we just voting on the start date?
So, it would be the entire calendar, I just wanted to point out the start date as we started the conversation, just because that was the main focal, the main point of conversation we had coming into this meeting. You're correct, Peter, so, so school would start either...
My, my, sorry, my concern is just simply that I know that at the last meeting we talked, most of it was around the start date, and we asked Ron to put together, like he did, these two calendars based upon starting before or after Labor Day, so technically it's the first time we've seen the whole calendar, so I'm not sure if we should be voting on it. I'm all for voting on the start date, but I'm not sure if we should vote on the entire calendar, just not, I'm just not sure what else, what else needs to be reviewed before we vote on that.
So, I can, I can offer a little bit of...
We have to vote on the start date tonight.
I can offer a little bit of information for the committee that was in your packet, when we talked about this on March 2. If you take a look at the memo that I have for you tonight, or the March 2 memo, they're similar, regardless of where you vote, Labor Day, not Labor Day, whatever you like to do, the rest of the days are, were also outlined on March 2 as well, most of them are the same, so, for example, April break, April 19th to 23, regardless of whether you voted before or after Labor Day, there's some PD days that are in there, your Thanksgiving is in there, to Mr. Long's point, your calendar for next year, for the most part, is very much the same, the big difference that you would have there is the before or after Labor Day. And again, just to refresh memories, the only other thing we talked about on March 2 was the idea of the presidential election. Historically, Situit Public Schools has had school during those days, or had professional development days on those days, election days, primary days. We have found, and talking with our colleagues in the town as well, that due to the increased interest in the national political landscape, that we're having a significant increase in participation, which is good for our society, like, good for democracy in general, but would mean that we encourage, we've encouraged that we don't have school on the Presidential Election Day, which is November 3, and you see that reflected on both of your calendars.
And just to clarify for anyone who's watching...
Can I just make one or two comments? One is, I do have concern with the prior Labor Day start with the PD day on Tuesday the 8th. To me, I feel like if we're going to start before Labor Day, we're trying to fit in as many days as possible, and to put a PD day there right there, to me, doesn't really make all that much sense. Obviously, PD at the beginning of the school year is more beneficial to the staff and the students, but that is concerning to me, otherwise, I'm generally in support of starting before Labor Day, especially in light of the fact that our kids are going to be out of their classrooms for the better part of six months, I'd like to get them back in sooner rather than later. And then, do we have any, did we have any final, the results of the survey that we had, was like 53 before Labor Day and 47 after, those were like the general results?
So, in your...
Pretty much like 50/50.
In your, in your memo that you have for April 1, you have 53% in favor, 47%, 53% in favor of starting before Labor Day, 47% after Labor Day, and Mr. Gates, to your question regarding professional development, I might turn it over to Ms. Arnold for a moment, who can give you a little further information regarding the selection of professional development dates and some of the rationale. Ms. Arnold?
Hi, yes, we discussed this as a professional development team, we, especially given our current circumstances, like you said, Peter, Mr. Gates, that we won't be out of school for a much longer time, we had had, we had planned professional development for, the biggest thing that would impact is professional development for our new elementary math program. And so, we, with not being able to have that math program, it's very different, I'm sure most of you have heard that, it's very different from the program we're using now, or any that we've used in the past, and it requires considerable professional development, and the teachers have been craving it. So, since we couldn't do the professional development before the end of this year, like we had wanted to, we thought that, excuse me, just getting back to school the first week, just getting into the swing of things, you know, establishing classroom communities, and then taking the next week when teachers really start teaching standards in earnest, that it would be best so that they could have that professional development then, so they feel comfortable going into the school year. The other consideration is that curriculum coordinators and departments do lots of work over the summer, curriculum writing, revisions of curriculum, of assessments, and units of study, so, they would be able to bring that to their teachers in a detailed way on that Thursday at the beginning of the year. The first two professional development days that we have, principals run, have ownership of that first day, and part of the second day, so principals have a lot to do on that first day of professional development, when the teachers just come back before the students come back. And then, on the second day, they have half that day, and then it sort of goes out to departments and grade levels, so they can't really get that overall curriculum planning and sharing of information during those first two days. So, that's the rationale for that decision.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold.
So, Ms. Arnold, I have a question on that, what...
Sorry, if we, if we do vote on this start date, is, is there this calendar, does that mean that PD day is for sure, like, that's what would happen?
Yes.
That what we would entail a vote? Okay.
And, Ron, the 8th, I mean, I know you mentioned the 8th is voting day, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so, if we started, you know, if we, if we vote to start after Labor Day, potentially could be starting on the 9th, because we don't want to have school session on voting day, and then we would lose the 24th, because that would be the PD day if we started after Labor Day, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Why would September 8 be voting day?
If we start before, we just lose the 8th.
September 8?
The PD. And, in March, when we have the PD day on the primary, did we get feedback from the teachers, was it problematic to have a PD on the day of voting?
Ms. Arnold, I'll turn it over to you, but I'll give you the short answer.
It was very much a logistical thing, that was more than anything, it was a lot moving parts.
Yeah. So, we would give you a plan, I mean, how does that work out in the end? I'm just curious, is it worth trying to do that over again on, during the election, which more totally participation, would it cause more problems that you, you know, if we, if we had PD that day?
Yeah, the district, the district would not recommend having any staff or students attending the buildings on the Presidential Election Day. Again, just as a reminder of what we talked about on March 2, we followed up with the town to get some estimates on volume, and we would, we anticipate there will be significant concerns regarding parking at a number of the buildings, we're coordinating staff to and from the buildings.
Okay, I'm just, you know, I know you have, I brought this in, yeah, and if that was, if that worked, then fine, I mean, I just, you know, that would be my only concern, having the PD day on that day. But if that was, if that was worked out in there, you know, you don't expect any issues, then it's fine.
No, if I can interject that, maybe I wasn't clear, it, it, we should not have a PD day on the Presidential Election Day, we should not, our recommendation would be to not have PD, or not have school, given the volume that we anticipate for Presidential Election Day.
Okay, all right, okay.
But Janice, you were talking about September 8 as an election day.
No, I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no.
Sorry, I was confused.
Right.
Was that what?
Yeah.
No, okay.
Yeah, I think it's like, I think it's last year we did have it, so, last year we did have.
So, if they vote to start after the 8th, it would be starting on September 8, nothing else, right?
Yeah.
Well, would, yeah. No, the calendar started after Labor Day, I don't know.
Labor Day's the 7th.
Yeah.
And we start when?
You would start the 8th, Tuesday.
The email that I got was tonight's backup had no attachment, so I, I can't see that.
Do you see it?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mike, it should be in the school committee folder on the, on your iPad, you should be able to get it.
Okay, but keep talking.
So, just if we could offer a little bit of clarity, the election day next year is November 3, and that's, that's the day that we would recommend to not have teachers or students in the buildings, we just feel like the volume is going to be significant and would be just disruptive.
Yeah, I agree.
And so, Labor Day would be the 7th.
The issue with putting that, the issue with putting that PD, PD day on the 8th is really, confuses things, you're really only getting one extra day by starting before Labor Day, right?
Two.
Two. No, because otherwise, they're going to start on the 8th.
Peter, if we, Peter, if we go back before Labor Day, the Professional Development Day would be the 8th, if we go back after Labor Day, it would be the 24th of September, so either way, there would be a day off in September, it would just be a matter of where we place it on the calendar based on...
Right, I'm just trying to justify going to school two days before Labor Day, then you have five days off in a row.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's a little disjointed, especially...
Two days, then five days off.
Right.
That's why the 8th, I think, PD Development Day is a real issue as far as I'm concerned.
Yeah.
So, Ms. Arnold, I actually have a question on that, so, if we go back after Labor Day, we would have that Professional Development Day on the 24th, so, for the math program, in that perspective, what would happen, how would the teachers prepare for those first two and a half weeks of school in the new math program?
So, it would be, it would be the same thing, it would be not that far into the year, where it would be, it would still be okay, but I wouldn't want it to go much further than that, much longer into the month than that.
So, we're confident then the teachers will have the plan in place for the first two and a half weeks to be able to roll out the new math program and not start with something old, and then switch to it at the end of September?
And the rationale for the 8th so early was just because of that, because they're, you know, they're going to have a four-day weekend, and then they come back, and maybe in school, I mean, oh, I'm sorry, and then there's an early release day later in the month, so, I think, and because it was on Labor Day, you know, it was just an additional day, we thought, one, it's just get, get overall, and one, else.
My concern, too, is for the kindergartners, they go one day, that's so hard.
Is there a reason why that PDA in September wasn't on the 25th, and why it's on a Thursday, if we go with that?
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
I'm just curious as to why the PD day is on a Thursday in September, not on, like, a Friday?
Because we felt that, oftentimes, when it's on a Friday, sometimes it just, it, people don't engage as much if it's on a Friday, it's, it just seems more, the PD is stronger, participation is better when it's on Thursday.
Okay, thank you, that makes sense.
And Mr. Griffin, kind of echoing what Nicole was just starting to ask, how would kindergarten be handled if we go back before Labor Day? Typically, they, they go back to school, they start the second day of school, so would the expectation be that the kindergartners will go on the 3rd, have five days off, and then start again on the 9th? Or is that something that we would, can determine later on in the calendar?
So, you've got it here, first day of kindergarten on the 3rd, if you take a look there, so, first day, if you look at your before Labor Day document, you see the first day on the 2nd, that's grades 1 through 12, and then first day of kindergarten on the 3rd, and then you'd have no school that Friday, and that's a contractual obligation that we have.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, personally, my gut says, you know, my parenting hat is saying, get the kids back ASAP, like, the earlier the better, but when you dive deep into contractual obligations, the holiday, the PD, it whittles away the benefits to starting earlier, and it almost, like, disjointed for the kids and staff, from my view, so, I mean, it seems late to start, obviously, as we've been discussing, all the way to nearly halfway through the month, but it's not a very connected flow prior to that anyway, I mean, it's, I don't know, and to gain two days to disjoint... know. And to gain two days to disjoint a day is sort of, I don't know. It's my opinion.
Yeah, I would have preferred to start on the Tuesday before, but.
Jen, Ms. Arnold.
Been out for so long already.
Did they consider?
Yeah, if we start before, I just feel like, you know, it's just, we got to get them back in.
Yeah.
Why can't we start before? Have PD Day on the 24th?
That's what I was going to ask.
Or the 17th. My concern is that you're going for two days and then you're off for five. It doesn't really make any sense to start then, but.
Right.
Again, my position is I want these kids back in school as soon as possible. That's how I feel.
I agree with Peter. I, but I, I agree with Peter, but my, then I get swayed by how it just, two days of learning is not effective so much. But I guess it's settling in. But yeah, I guess that would be a good question, is why not do PD the 24th, starting before, so you don't lose that day on the 8th? It's one day, but.
I'll turn it over to Ms. Arnold for questions on the PD Day.
So I understand the concerns. I would hate to see if we started before Labor Day. I'd hate to see the professional development day go all the way out to the 24th, because that would mean, you know, close to, it would be three and a half weeks into instruction. And so those elementary school teachers would not have had the benefit of the PD. And we, we all know that the best PD needs to be in place in order to make any curriculum or pedagogical practice in place. Now, PD has to be in place in order to implement anything well. So if we go back before Labor Day, I would ask that September PD Day be moved up, so it's closer to the beginning of the school week.
Okay.
Is there a reason why the 24th was picked for the after-school, the after-Labor Day start?
We picked it based on the calendar that we had in front of us. I, I don't have the early release dates in front of me, but we, that was going to be a proposed early release day on the 17th. So that, because they typically are the third week in the month.
Right. I mean, I would feel a bit more comfortable if we voted on the start date and worked out the PD after. I mean, if we have to move it up, you know, how am I moving the PD to the 17th to start before Labor Day?
Are you asking me, Jen?
Oh, yes.
No, I don't, I don't think that. I think the 17th would be okay if you started before Labor Day at that, what the school committee would like.
Yeah. That would be my.
Okay.
That would be fine.
So let's take this two ways then, just to be clean. So are there any other questions regarding the start date of school?
No, I have no questions. This is my case. I have no questions. Again, I'm just very good at maintaining Citroen, starting after Labor Day for a variety of reasons that I stated before. But we're getting so much in the week here. It seems like we're a pollution looking for a problem. It doesn't happen every seven years since Citroen has survived. I also just want to remind everyone, if you look at the CDC says and the National Institute of Health says, we'll probably be looking at a recurrence of the pandemic in the late summer and early fall. So, you know, you know, our problems aren't going to end on May 3rd, certainly.
No, and we could crack that bridge if we have to come to it. And I agree that starting after Labor Day has historically been the preference, but this, this particular year, you know, regardless of it, you know, the seventh year, I think with the kids already being out so much, I think I prefer we start before.
All right. So here's what I'm going to do, just to keep this clean, so that we're not talking over each other and over the phone. What I'm going to, I guess first, I will, well, first, I'm going to preface this by saying, I remember several years ago, we had a conversation about to start before or after Labor Day. So I suggest that as a committee, if we set this date, we set it in stone, and we don't go changing it at our next meeting or next month or anything along those lines. So when we vote this, I highly recommend that we don't start changing, and if we decide that we're going to vote the rest of the calendar at a later date. That's just my experience in making sure we set a good standard with the community to know when the, when the school year will start next year. So at this point, does anyone want to make a motion on the start date of the 2020-2021 school year?
I make a motion that the 2020-2021 school year start on September 2nd.
Okay. So I'm going to, so just so that the vote is clear, I'm going to call out names just to then do a roll call vote. Lynn Blum?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
No.
Brandalini?
Yes.
Long no. So the start date, as voted on this, on this vote, will be September 2nd, Moving on to the, the rest of the calendar, I know there's some back and forth on start dates and early release or late start. Do we want to continue the conversation on the calendar in terms of what, setting the, setting the rest of the calendar, or do we want to hold that off for another meeting?
I think we should hold it up for another meeting, frankly.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Nope.
Any other motion?
At least on those, you know, maybe some more thoughts to go to those PD days.
Okay. You don't need a motion for that, right? All right. So Janice, we don't need a motion for that. What I would ask, since we voted on this tonight, if, in the next update going out to the town superintendent Griffin, if the start date can just be sent out to the town so people know when the start date will be for next year.
Okay, yeah. I think that's what people are really looking for right now.
Happy to do that. If I could just offer some, request some clarity and guidance. So our next communication to families will go out 8:00 AM tomorrow morning. It's really focused on distance learning, so for the sake of clarity and simplicity, I would just say, in a short, soon future, but not this absolute next communication. Okay. And then if I can understand the guidance. So for our next meeting, we'll have the Ms. Arnold professional team will take a look at PD Days, provide the committee with one calendar to take a look at, with all the PD Days outlined with the start date you voted on.
Please. And I agree, it should be separate from anything discussing the distance learning. There should be its own separate email.
That just talks about that.
Very clear subject, very clear focusing solely on the start date.
Will do.
Okay. So moving on then, the next item on the agenda is the FY21 operating budget. Mr. Griffin?
I thank you very much. I realize that, again, this will be your second meeting on operational budgets. What you have in front of you is the same operational budget you saw on March 2nd. Couple items that I want to bring to your attention if I can. We recognize that this COVID-19 pandemic is most certainly going to impact the economy at almost every scale. We want to be honest with ourselves about that and transparent about, you know, that, that eventuality. No one knows what that's going to look like in terms of, you know, stimulus funds, emergency funds. No one's really sure on that yet. We recognize that that can be a significant impact. We're recommending that the committee take a look at our budget and vote our current budget with the understanding that you're going to have to amend it likely at some point. And that amendment might be in weeks, it might be in months, it might be six months from now. As I understand today, and correct me if I'm wrong, annual town meeting is still slated as scheduled. And so because of that, we want to still have a budget ready to go for the annual town meeting. Could that change? Of course it could. So it's my recommendation to the committee that you vote for your current operational budget with the understanding that you may need to revisit this and make adjustments accordingly, based on the national, state, local economies.
So have there been any major changes or any, any changes to the budget since we last started?
No.
Okay. All right.
And Ron, if we do vote on this today, as you alluded to, we, and if there are changes, we can, we, and before town meeting, we can request a re-vote, correct? A new vote on the new numbers.
Yes, you can always amend your budget. You can amend your budget after town meeting. You always reserve the right to amend your budget.
Okay.
And to be clear, Ron, the amount that we would be voting tonight is the $43,985,886?
So you see in your memo, there's actually two numbers that I request you vote on here. They're the, actually the local appropriations, so the $40,206,060, that's your state and local aid appropriation. And the other is your bus lease. And so when you go to town meeting, you're going to see in your, like, town meeting booklet, two lines for the school department, those two. Again, I just want to underscore that's not your full operational budget. It does not include your state and your national grants. It does not include your offsets, like your fees. But those two numbers, the local and state aid and the bus leases, are the ones that are going to be necessary for, for town meeting. So if I, if I could be so forward and recommend, there actually may be three votes. One, your operational budget, two, your local and state aid, three, your bus leases. Just to be on the, check every box side of things.
In the dollar amount that I just stated.
Please.
Okay. I want to make sure we vote the right number.
Yes.
Are there any other questions for people on the phone on the budget? Nicole?
No questions.
Q and A session has started.
I'm all set.
Making sure I have my numbers. What was the OP budget again? I have the state and local.
You have to vote on the budget, correct?
Yeah.
Yep, Nicole's going to make that motion in a second.
Very separate ones.
Yeah, so the operating budget is $43,985,886.
Okay.
Just trying to make the first motion.
I'll move the, the operating budget as presented.
Second. Okay. Lynn Blum? Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
And long yes. Okay. For the second motion?
Local and state aid, number at $40,206,060.
Okay, I'll second that. So for the roll call vote, Lynn Blum?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
And long yes. And Mike, do you want to make the third motion as well?
The bus lane line item on town meeting, $250,000.
Second.
Okay. Lynn Blum?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Brandalini?
Yes.
And long yes. So you get that?
Yes, and thank you very much. And again, is there, if there are any changes in budget, we'll keep the committee up to date and bring it back up from amendments as needed.
Perfect. Thank you very much. So the next section in the agenda is the public comment. Before we start with anyone on the phone, Janice, I know in the agenda, we said if there were any questions from the community that could reach out to you directly through email. Was there anything there that you wanted to bring up before I open it up to the people on the phone?
Q and A session is over.
That was easy.
I had an email from Erin Sweeney, and she had two questions. One was how and when are, will specialized services be provided? But I think Mr. Griffin answered that question in his report. And also, is there any update on the start times? And we, we're not addressing start times at this, at this moment. So if anybody else wants to comment on that.
We were talking about sped services. Was it about, like, speech and OT in the classrooms as well? Not just, like, speech and OT in the classrooms and all of that for, or specialists providing?
What I, what I might recommend, if it's, if it pleases the committee, we're going to go through distance learning in a few minutes.
Okay.
And there'll be a whole section on special education. Ms. Mullen will be able to brief you on everything in terms of, like, classroom sped as well as related services.
Yeah.
Would that be okay?
And I would say as well, that there is a second, second time in the agenda for public comment after the distance learning. So if there are any questions on that, we can.
Q and A session has started.
We can definitely take those again after the discussion. All right. So Kim Peters told me that there are six people on the line to ask questions. What I would ask for the people on the phone is just state your name and address for the record. And Kim, I'll have you start letting people.
Could I add just one more direction for community members who are on the line? So using this system, what will happen is you're in a queue right now. If you have a question, it allows you to, like, punch in a little code, I think it's star 6, but you'll hear it right in your phone, and that'll put you in the queue. And then, because you don't know where you are in the queue, the computerized voice that you keep hearing, kind of popping on and off, will say, you are next in line. If you don't hear that you're next in line, someone else is about to go. Just so that everyone doesn't say their comment, but then they only hear this one person. So again, when you press that button on your phone to get into the queue, you'll be put into the queue to ask a question. When it's your turn to ask a question, a lovely computerized voice will say, you're now next in line to ask your question, and then you can go ahead, you're live.
Okay. And with that, we'll take the first question.
Caller, are you there?
Take a minute. It takes a minute.
Yeah.
So again, I just want to, as we're kind of waiting for this, it's possible that folks, when you call in, you can call and just listen to the meeting on the phone. But if you have a question or a comment, there's a prompt, and again, I believe, and Ms. Peters, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's star 6, that says, oh, star 6, I have an actual question. I don't just want to listen. And then that puts you in the queue to ask the question. And so if no one presses the star 6, we'll move on to the next item, and there'll be another opportunity after we do the presentation about distance learning, where folks can again ask questions. So if there's no questions on this portion of the agenda, there'll still be time after we do the presentation and the quarterly budget update to ask questions again.
I just want, Kim, to confirm that there's nobody waiting to ask a question?
There appears to be one person waiting.
Okay. Are you able to just prompt them up?
I hit next question and I saw their name, but they're not coming through. Okay.
Maybe we can.
The Q and A session is live.
Maybe we can continue on, and there'll be another opportunity for that person to ask a question. If you're that person and you've got your question, one of the things that's sometimes helpful is, like, hang up, recall, and then see if you can get back into the queue. Again, I don't know who you are, but if that's, if that's helpful, sometimes that restarts the system.
And if people on the phone want to as well, if you want to just email the chair, janisslindblom@cit.org, which is on the meeting agenda. If we're having any problems, but she receives an email during the, the meeting, we'll, we'll respond. We'll have her read the question, we'll respond at that time, at that time. And if there are any people that can't get through for whatever reason, you can send an email after the meeting, and we'll respond. Janice or someone can respond to that email, and then we can address it at the next school committee meeting as well. So at this time, I'll turn it over to.
The Q and A session for right now until the next public comment.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, Kim. Q and A session is over.
So next on the agenda is the transition to distance learning.
So you've got a presentation in front of you there, and kudos again to, to our educational team for, for putting together all this, this hard work for distance learning. Again, I just want to reiterate, not just here in Citroen, but throughout the Commonwealth, school districts are sort of reimagining education in a completely new way. And so I appreciate all the work that's gone into sort of building out this framework and building out this plan. And what we have for you here is an overview of that plan. In your backup, you have an advanced copy. That's the copy that the staff received on Monday. They've been using this week as a ramp-up week, and families will receive that same information that you all have tomorrow morning at, I guess at 8:30, I think it goes out. Families will get a voicemail from me articulating what this is, along with. Families will get a voicemail from me articulating what this is, uh, along with an email that has a link directly to the plan as well, all twelve, thirteen pages of it. Uh, and staff will have had, had time to digest this, so families can ask questions with their principal and their teachers now that they've had time to digest it as well.
And can this also go up on the school website?
It'll already, it'll link to our website, so like, the link that parents get is actually a link that's on our website.
Okay.
And we'll have, like, a, it's like a quick button. So instead of scrolling through all the things on the website, there'll be a link center of the website that says, "Distance Learning." It'll look like a blue book, I want to say. People will click on it, and they'll get that document. Right now, even you click on that, it's all the enrichment materials that we've been putting out.
Yep, okay.
Uh, and kudos to Steve DePross, our, our tech guy, who's been just phenomenal about, like, lining all these things up so that when you click the link, it'll work on, again, eight-thirty tomorrow morning. Uh, so I'll give you an overview of distance learning, and, um, so open up the questions for the committee first. Uh, so distance learning can happen in a couple of different ways, and, um, there's two ways that are probably the most common. It's called synchronous and asynchronous. Synchronous is, is real-time learning that you'd have when you do an online course for, you know, graduate credit or something. Those happen typically when you've got, uh, normal circumstances. It can happen online in a variety of different ways. They use it as a real-time chat, uh, for the entire class. Asynchronous is, uh, when you have some of that opportunity for real-time chat, but people have more flexibility to do the assignments. Citro Public Schools is going asynchronous, given the situation in our society right now, because every family's going through something really differently. So our learning platform, our learning framework, is going to start with teachers providing, uh, standards-based assignments on Monday. Students will get those in the morning, and they'll have the opportunity to work at their pace, using the framework and the structure teachers provided, to do those assignments with feedback and input from the teachers throughout the week, but at their own pace. So if they've got family who is at home and their mornings work better for them, great, use your morning. If mornings aren't working for your family and you want to do this work in the evening, that's okay to you. If you need to do it on the weekend because you're working to help with, you know, siblings and get your house, like, that's okay too. So the assignments themselves are front-loaded to the beginning of the week and are typically due at the end of the week. We recognize Good Friday is on Friday, and so there'll obviously be flexibility with Good Friday coming up. But the asynchronous opportunity gives kids and staff some flexibility through this, uh, unusual situation that we're, we're wrestling with with COVID-19, to still move forward, to still learn new things, uh, to still get that feedback, but to do it on a much more flexible schedule. April sixth is our launch date. That's going to be our launch date pre-K at twelve. Some elements that are important to keep in the back of your mind as we, we think about SPS's distance learning plan. The first is making sure that our educators are able to coordinate and coordinate the experiences and assignments for kids at the grade level and the department level, depending at the age of the students. We've been spending this week working with educators and principals and coordinators to start getting them together online, uh, through a variety of different platforms, both for their assignments and for their conversations to plan together. Again, in a typical day, teachers plan together all the time. Uh, they plan in, planning meetings, they sometimes plan, like, bumping into each other. "Oh, you're doing that assignment? Me too. Let's work on this together. Let's, you know, do cross-curricular effort in those ways." So we still want to give teachers those opportunities, because when teachers plan together, we get a more authentic, more, um, high-level opportunity for students to learn. The curriculum assignments, again, as I said, uh, we'll start with review typically. Make sure all of our kids, uh, are caught up to where they're supposed to be. And then on April sixth, we're going to start a new grading marking period for our school district. Uh, depending on what building you're in, it could be, uh, quarter four, or trimester three, or the second semester. But essentially, everybody in Citro Public Schools will start fresh on April sixth. Uh, we'll close out the previous marking period. The third item is the one that I think people are, are most interested in, is this idea of, like, classroom-community time. So there's a lot of different ways for teachers to connect with students, and, um, teachers and their, their schools and their grade levels are working together to identify the ways that make sense for the age of their children, as well as for the curriculum and assignments that they're, that they're going to be providing. Some of those can look like, uh, you know, your video conferencing, like your Google Hangout and your Zooms, uh, but others might be debate on, uh, a topic using, uh, a chat system. Or it might be working together on a single, you know, historical document. "Let's take a look at the Declaration of Independence together, and we're adding comments and debate that way." The point of classroom continuity, though, is that there's this real-time response between teacher and student on whatever it is they're learning. We recognize we cannot identically emulate the classroom experience through distance learning, and frankly, no one can. That said, the most important part of learning is the connection between teacher and students, and to make sure that students have that opportunity to dialogue with each other and have dialogue with the expert in their curriculum or expert in their subject matter. And we think that, that classroom continuity, classroom community time, allows to build some of that through a variety of different platforms. Uh, the last portion is the feedback and grading. Uh, and again, when we think about why we give assignments in the first place, it's to help students grow, and the way we do that is through feedback. We're to ensure that while our grading system can't be the same grading system as we would typically have on a normal school day, that our grading system is focused on giving kids high-quality feedback. So we're shifting to a standards-based feedback system, which means when you design a, a lesson or an assignment, you set one or two of the standards that the state has set for your curriculum or your grade level, and the feedback now is going to be focused on helping a student meet that standard, or giving him or her feedback to get to that place to meeting that standard. For our high school students and families, they're, you know, obviously thinking about, like, "How do I get credits?" It's going to be a credit or no-credit model. So if students are meeting that standard, they obviously get the credit for the assignment, and therefore, assignment credit equal credit for the course. If they're not meeting that standard, they get feedback from their educator about how they're progressing toward that standard, so that they can ultimately, uh, earn that credit for the assignment, and therefore, credits for the course. That's it in a nutshell. Again, parents will get about twelve or thirteen pages of that document that goes into, to further detail on all the things I just talked about. It also articulates all the roles, so not just the educator that's in their lives, but folks like paraprofessionals who support students, and adjustment counselors, and related service, uh, providers, like occupational therapy and, and SLP, and so on and so forth. So families will be able to see, uh, the, the group effort that we have to try to provide high-quality learning through a distance framework. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Arnold, who's going to walk you through a little bit about what educator planning and, uh, coordination looks like in further detail. Ms. Arnold?
Um, yeah, thank you, super kind of person. So already, our department chairs, curriculum coordinators, and principals have held virtual meetings with faculty. I'd like to really commend the department chairs and curriculum coordinators, who have really stepped up to make sure this happens. Um, they've had a lot of questions about it, which is, has provided us the opportunity to work through a lot of issues in advance of talk, talking to teachers and families about all of this. So the other thing is that they will continue to meet weekly, because, as Superintendent Griffin said, they need to meet because that ensures consistency, in whether it's grading, curriculum, um, classroom cultures, they need to be able to, to coordinate and collaborate weekly, and so they'll continue to do that using a digital platform. Do you want me to go on to curriculum and assignments?
Yes, please.
Okay. So, um, every, every Monday, the faculty will give, uh, each teacher will give an agenda, provide an agenda, and, um, assignments for the students. The top of that page says curriculum and assessment. It should say curriculum and assignment, so, I apologize. So they'll post their agendas and their assignments, and everything will be due on Friday, unless it's a long-term project. So it, it might not be due for a couple of weeks, it might be due, um, it might, we're trying to continue with project-based learning as much as possible, so it may be much longer term than a couple of weeks. Um, they're going to begin the whole distance learning plan, though, by reviewing or reteaching things that they've, uh, students have seen before. And that's critical because that, that, and, we're not sure, one, we need to assess where they are, and, two, they've been out of school for a while with, and, and they're all very confused, I'm sure. And so we need to make sure that they can all get back together, remember what the curriculum is, talk about what they already know, and then reinforce any concept that where students need that. And the other thing is that it's going to amount to about a half a day of learning. So students, that's from DESI, they recommend that students engage for about a half of their, uh, school day, I apologize, half a regular school day of learning. So, but that doesn't mean they, mean they should be in front of a computer, or be speaking with your teacher or their classmates during that half-day, which is said to be three hours. But they have work that they should be doing during that three-hour period. So they might be working on, uh, responding to a text, or, you know, um, some math problems, or whatever that is assigned to them during those three hours of that day, and that's every day. The next thing is classroom community time. The Superintendent Griffin talked about this. It, it is critical to have the students, again, because they've been out for a while and haven't been in touch with each other, have, have the ability to connect with their teachers, their classmates. And actually, a lot of our teachers have already been doing this, and the overwhelming positive feedback they've received from their students, who are saying things like, "Oh, I'm so glad that you reached out to us, Ms. Mullin. We are so happy to talk to you, I miss you." And then they're also able to connect with their classmates. So they're going to continue to do that, and that will be for an hour. Every week, each teacher will be doing that with their students. Um, so in order for that to happen, it's sort of like, a little bit like a jigsaw puzzle. And principals with educators are creating a real-time schedule for that community time, so that if you have a couple of children in your family, what, we don't want a teacher to, two different teachers to have same classroom community time, because they wouldn't be able to access it, um, unless you have multiple devices. So that's one thing that we're, we are working out right now. During the classroom community time, if they can use some video conferencing tools, any district-approved digital tools. So as the Superintendent referenced, there might be Zoom, there is a part of the Google Suite, there is Google Meet Chat, which is an interactive chat component. Um, they can work on shared discussion boards and other platforms that are, they're currently using. One example is ClassDojo, lots of elementary school teachers use that. Um, and teachers will also maintain communication through email with all students. So they're available for students, uh, when a student has an issue, they should email the teacher, or parents should email the teacher. This is meant, the video platform, the digital platform, is not meant to take the place of all communication. People should still feel free, students and families, to reach out to the teacher. And then finally, um, is feedback and grading. And as Superintendent referenced, this is, is critical to switch everybody's mindset from quantitative, um, designation to qualitative. So really, all of the, students learn best when they get thoughtful, timely, and specific feedback. And so that's what this, this is learning plan has embedded within it. Everything that students do, they should be receiving quality feedback from their teachers in a timely way, because the difference is that record cards will be credit or no-credit as a designation, so we won't have letter grades or number, number designations. And so what the students, how students will be assessed is by, are they meeting the standard, the learning standard? Are they partially meeting it, or will, have they not met it at all? And so we've decided that partially meeting and meeting would mean a designation of credit, and a not-meeting expectation would be no-credit. But the critical piece is we don't want anybody to end up with no-credit. And so that thoughtful feedback and timely interaction with students will help support them so that everybody can earn credit. Um, and Superintendent said that the third trimester or, or final quarter will begin on Monday, April sixth. And, I mean, that's it. Unless anybody has any questions on any of those.
I'll turn it over to, uh, Ms. Mullin then to talk a little bit about special education as well with distance learning. Ms. Mullin?
Yes. So, uh, all of our special educators and related service providers are well embedded into the full district learning plan. Um, all of our special educators and related service providers are going to be collaborating with the general educators and with each other to provide support to the students and the families. So they will be involved in lesson planning as they are with, when they're doing co-teaching when we're back in school. And they will also be coordinated with each other for the specialized services. As Superintendent Griffin did say, we can't identically emulate schools. We also cannot, um, identically emulate special ed services. And so, um, families are going to see that a lot of the services is going to be embedded within the general ed curriculum, as well as, uh, when the special educators have their community outreach time, and they will also be having their own, um, classroom, Google Classroom setups for the students. The IEP goals will be a focus of our instruction. Um, uh, you will see also in the plan, there is a template that we'll be sending to parents, uh, explaining how their child's IEP goals are embedded into the curriculum. Um, so parents will be receiving that soon. And then, um, a lot of the work is thinking outside the box. So I know a lot of questions were, "How is my student going to get occupational therapy or physical therapy?" So those related service providers are going to be working with the special education and general education teachers to embed those skills within the lesson, to provide, um, the visual modeling, uh, sorry, video modeling, um, to provide some, uh, direct instruction that is needed through the, the community time, and trying to, uh, think of other activities that students can do to build up those related service areas. Our school psychologists will be able to, um, do some modified counseling services for the IEP as well. And I have sent out to the entire special ed team guidance on the confidentiality of our platform, and through Paige Tobin, our district attorney, she gave us, um, a specific format that we're going to use with the parents for those, uh, what we do. For example, um, not just the counselor's counseling, but also if we do, uh, just group special ed lessons. If the special educators are with their students that they would have been in school day, now they're on video and confidentiality of every parent knowing that child's in special ed. So there is a disclaimer that's going to be sent to the parents, and they can opt out of that group session. Um, but they're being told what the format is, what the journey is on the format, um, and so that's, that's getting that is. Uh, as far as holding IEP meetings and doing evaluations, those are on hold at this time. We have, um, that is the guidance from Russell Johnson at this time, but I do have a meeting with him on Friday, so hopefully we'll get further guidance on what, um, what that means. They were really trying to get some legal guidance on school days, uh, is this the accountability days or not, with the way that the regulations read for special education. So right now, we're just concentrating our resources to get out our learning plans, and we'll be exploring whether or how we have IEP meetings, and as I said, we expect further guidance from DESI shortly. Our out-of-district students, again, you'll see in the more detailed plan, um, the out-of-district placements have been sending us the ways that they have been doing outreach to students, and so those families should be expecting or should have already received outreach from, from those, um, different placements about learning packets or other virtual means that they are providing for the students. But we're keeping a, in close contact, if not daily contact, with those placements to just make sure things are happening for our students.
And Ms. Mullin, if I could interject... If I could interject just for a moment, I, I thank you for that, that thorough summary. One item I just want to underscore is the idea that special educators and classroom teachers will continue to plan together, so if their assignments need to be modified, we have the opportunity to do that and give a modified assignment. That's the large majority of special education students are receiving some version of modification, and we recognize that while virtual planning is not ideal, uh, we still want to ensure that classroom teachers and special educators have that time to have conversations about what their students' needs are, and modify assignments accordingly and provide the support. So, uh, thank you to the special educators. So thank you to the special education team. Thank you to Ms. Mullin for her leadership in this as well. I'll, I'll close it out if I can.
So I just also want to say too, that our, our self-contained programs are really being very creative in their instruction. And they started that level of instruction prior to even this learning plan being developed. And so I want to give them great credit because they really thought outside the box and have worked together as teams to provide the more unique specialized services for our students that are, that some of our students require.
Well said. Agreed. I'll bring it to a close if I can by saying, again, we're recreating education through this distance platform. And we recognize that it's not going to be classroom instruction like we typically see every day. That said, what you'll see in the document when it goes out is it's version 1.0. With the understanding that we're open and willing to make adjustments as we need to, as we live this and breathe it with our community, with our staff members, with our students. If we need to make adjustments to the way we do these platforms, where we collaborate with educators, we collaborate with students, we want to offer that opportunity to make a modification accordingly so that we can give people the best possible education experience for their kids that we can.
I have a question. Question about Zoom specifically with, this just came up in a Zoom, well, it wasn't Zoom. Actually, it was a Google, Google meetup today because some districts, it seems, are saying to stay away from that particular platform because of the private, or the, you know, the layers of protection there. And like, the Google platform seems to have added layers. And since, I'm assuming we pay for that using Google Classroom as a district, we get additional privacy and kind of...
We do get some additional layers. It's a really great question. I want to be upfront that, you know, no matter what organization you use that's a web-based product, there's going to be some level of privacy that you give up, just like your Facebook or, you know, other social media that you might use. We get more privacy with Google because we're a Google district and we participate with them. One of the things that Zoom has, again, this feels like an infomercial for them.
I know. I didn't mean, want to necessarily speak to certain...
They're the one people are using right now. But one of the things they've done to be really responsive is they've added layers like passwording their, their Zoom meetings and those sorts of things, so that people can't just hop into any Zoom meeting, right? So those, those sorts of caveats had been a challenge early on. And the company's been really responsive to a lot of school districts who are using that either as one of their elements or as their sole platform, you know? One of the things we've tried to do throughout this plan, one of the themes throughout this plan is flexibility. We recognize that in situations like this where we have really uncertain times, it requires you to be flexible and not rigid in your thinking and not rigid in your implementation. So Zoom is certainly one of the platforms, Google Hangouts, I was just on one earlier today on Google Hangouts, that's another one. We also recognize that video chat isn't the only way to have asynchronous learning and opportunities to work with staff members directly. And so we've also encouraged staff to think about ways that they can collaborate on documents with students and they can collaborate through chat with students and those sorts of things as well. We recognize that this is for young kids all the way up to adults. And so we really have to offer that kind of flexibility with our educators to provide the platform that they, that makes good sense for them. One other thing I would just say about the video platforms, some of our educators are very fluent on those platforms. Others need some support. And so, again, kudos to our tech team. They've been rolling out workshops nonstop for educators to pick the platforms that make sense for their kiddos and make sense for their area of expertise, and then get comfortable with the security measures that are on their platform and get comfortable with managing them because, well, you know, in a classroom, you set norms in a classroom. This is a virtual space that you still have to set norms, but the norms look really different, right? So like muting your phone when it's not your turn to talk, like those sorts of things that make conference calls less awkward. We've got to do some of that work with kiddos as well.
And looking at that question that was, came up earlier about full-day K and fees and all that and refunds, are you able, do you feel confidently that you've been able to create something that's appropriate for full-day K students to learn and fulfill the rest of the year? That's beefy and full of, you know, everything that they need to validate that?
Yeah, and I think that's true for, for every grade, right? So like, your first grade has no fee to it, but your taxpayer dollars pay for first grade, you know? And so that's the reason that we took this week to do the ramp up. We didn't want to rush something out that was, I mean, the governor just put this out a couple of days ago. And we didn't want to rush something out without being thoughtful about the way we give time for teachers to plan and do this really effectively and thoughtfully. So we're confident that we're going to have good, high-quality educational experiences for kiddos. But we recognize that there are going to be bumps along the way. Logistic bumps like we ran into tonight, where the technology was supposed to do a certain thing and it didn't quite do that thing. But we've got good teachers, we've got good principals working on this as well. I'm confident that when folks get their first set of assignments on Monday, they're going to look at these and go, "This is what I've been looking for for my kiddo."
Excellent.
And I know you mentioned this in your leadership update earlier today, but for the AP tests, where kids could do that online this year, do we know the dates? Like, are we able to start prepping kids, but this is when it's going to occur? Make sure you're ready and you have the infrastructure ready to be able to do it online?
Communication will be going out both from the college board and from our high school team. Again, sort of layered. College board will usually send us a 24-hour advance information on some certain things. Occasionally do, occasionally don't. When we get that advanced information, we're able to prep it and digest it for our students. College board sends it out, we send out details specific to the situation.
Perfect.
And are you solid on, sorry, everybody on the phone, I don't mean to cut anyone off.
They don't want the visual cues.
You're solid, the district's solid on...
Nicole just keeps talking.
You're solid on grading in terms of credit versus credit, no credit model?
Say again, I'm sorry.
The grading system that Jen was talking, Ms. Arnold was talking about. The district's solid on that approach of credit, no credit, meeting expectations?
Yeah, for a couple of reasons, right? So we spent, this is probably the thing we spent the most time with the state on. Your qualitative versus quantitative feedback conversation is one that schools have anyway. COVID-19 aside and distance learning aside, the state and I think superintendents and districts have agreed that having some kind of standards-based system that's credit and no credit is the right way to take this. Because for a large majority of school districts, they are going to do asynchronous. And so you want to give kids high-quality credit. But are you able to give them an 87 on that? That's going to be really challenging in asynchronous time, right? So focusing on standards is good for kids anyway. And doing this credit, no credit still allows us to have like this crosswalk between the GPAs that kids have right now in ninth grade and hopefully what they'll have next year as well, when we return to the sense of normalcy and, you know, your typical school day.
I only have one more question.
Please.
Our older students obviously are well-acclimated to Google Classroom and more so to the virtual world in general. But for the littler ones, is there any outreach or tutorials that parents are getting if you haven't been acclimated to Google Classroom and Aspen and all those places?
It's a super great question. What we've, we purposely built the distance learning framework document to be what we call a front-facing document, which means it's available for everybody. But it has information that the educators are using to acclimate themselves to these things that parents can use as well. So you see in a page in there, it talks about like training workshops and tutorials that are online for teachers. Anyone can access those. They're the same kinds of information that our teachers are using to navigate. If they're not comfortable with a particular platform, a parent can do the same.
Okay, great.
Questions?
For anyone on the phone from the school committee, do you have any questions on this agenda item?
No, I just want to comment that, I just want to thank the, you know, as part of some of the conversation about this document, and a lot of hard work went into it. And I want to thank everybody involved that put it together.
And I think on top of that, all of the teachers that are taking the document and...
I'll second Janice's comment. You know, we're in a world that's changing by the hour. And I really appreciate all the hard work and timely work to get this going in an organized and what I think will be a productive process for our kids. So thank you very much.
Yeah, and just to echo that, I think from the administration down to the...
I'll echo those comments as well. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. Number one, in the odd chance that a student has not or does not hear from their teacher, what is the protocol for that, for that family?
Students should hear from their teachers because we have all the contact information for all of our students already. So I guess the, the protocol is sort of identical. If for whatever reason your child didn't get the something that your teacher ever sends them, just like you normally would, you should contact that teacher or contact that school directly, in this case via email. But rest assured, just like we have all of the emails and phone numbers that we would use typically every day anyway to work with our families and students, we still use that information to make sure that we connect with, with families and students as well.
Okay, great. And then just a follow-up on the grading. So we're doing meets standards, doesn't meet standards. So will it have zero impact on GPA calculations and so on and class rank?
That's correct. So we're not going to count this for or against class rank or GPA other than that you will have credit for your courses. So we still need to decide like if you have credit for, I don't know, your English class, for example. But for this moment in time, this is not going to be, we're not going to create some type... We thought about doing some kind of crosswalk where we could say meets equals this amount of GPA, but it gets really messy. And so for the time being, we're simply saying, we're not going to count it for or against that GPA, but we're going to count it for the credit itself on the transcript so that we can credit a student having taken that course and completed that course and met the standards of that course for their transcript going forward.
Okay. I don't disagree with that. I probably more agree with it than anything. I just want to make sure that we understand any potential negative ramifications. For example, if a student from situat applies to a college in the college that there was a meet standard versus not meet standard for, you know, one semester, how we would compare with other districts? So I was curious how many other districts are using a similar standard to ours?
I can't speak for all districts, but I would say that our high school team has been working closely with the South Shore High Schools, just like I was working closely with the superintendents on, you know, the distance learning framework in general and on, you know, closures and those sorts of things. Our goal is to try to have some level of continuity across the region and across the state. And I just, again, while I can't speak for the colleges, I would be shocked if a college looked at that moment in time for a student and didn't realize this was a national, you know, international pandemic. Oh, that's got to be why they used, you know, a standards-based. But I think that the, there's value, and I appreciate the expertise from our guidance counselors in particular to say, "Let's not count this for or against," so we're not throwing wrenches in GPAs necessarily. But it allows students to have credit so we can count those courses on the transcript.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. So next on the agenda is the quarterly budget update from Mr. Donlan.
Okay, as Mike said, this is changing by the hour. Everything's changing. The budget is still the same. The main opportunity that we have is out-of-district tuitions. And we're trying to close that gap. And we did stop that, changing of that, trying to close that gap by, everywhere we instituted a a shock freeze on materials and supplies. And so if you look at your documents, you'll see that, you'll see some extra opportunities and money available maybe to close some of that gap for out-of-district placements. One other, well, there's some, there's some other things that we're looking at now during COVID-19 is our school lunch. We've committed to pay our school lunch personnel, but we don't have revenue coming in since the middle of March, which was, would have been our biggest, our biggest month because there's no school days during March. So that would have been one of our biggest months, but we lost half of that. So we have to look at that. That's an opportunity that we're going to have to close that gap somehow, make it up. We're also looking at athletic fees. I think those will take care of themselves if we come back, when we come back in May. EPC receipts, we're looking at those. Four-day kindergarten, we're looking at those receipts also. If you turn your attention to salary, I can tell you that the teachers, and I've looked at all the line items that have teachers' line items. We have paid them, they have 16 pays they've had so far out of the 26, so there's 10 left. I've looked at all those things. They should be at 61.54. They are, or a little bit slightly lower than that. What we are looking at and is, if you turn to page two, the substitute line item is high. This year, we've had a couple of long-term substitutes that we have to bring in for teachers that have had some issues. And we, we are tracking those in the, in the substitute line items because we're paying for the teacher out of their regular line item. So that's another opportunity, another place that we're looking at, substitutes. Pairs and the 10-month secretaries have been paid 15 times, and they have six left. They are 21 pays. And they should be at 71.43. And that's exactly, pretty much where they are. We, a lot of our fees and a lot of, some of our grants pay for the pairs. And so we're keeping an eye on how much fees we get in the revenues for that.
And if I could, Mr. Donlan?
12-month...
Mr. Donlan, could I, could I interject for just a moment on that, just for one second?
Sure.
So one of the things I wanted to just underscore with the committee, I think there's been a lot of conversation across the state and potential impact with hourly workers. Companies that have either furloughed hourly workers or made changes to their structure. I wanted to let you all know that we've made a commitment to our entire staff, 518 people, hourly workers are salary, that everyone will continue to be paid through this entire pandemic, through the extended closure. We feel strongly that everybody, while their role might look a little bit different in the coming weeks, can contribute and support, and support education in some way. We also recognize that we want to make sure that when we get back to normalcy, whenever that is, that all 518 people are still here, ready to open our schools and welcome our kids when they return. So when Mr. Donlan talks a little about some of our hourly workers' lines, know that it's been my expectation that we continue to pay our hourly staff just as we pay all of our salary staff through this. Please, go ahead, Mr. Donlan, continue.
Thank you. I think that's a very important statement to make, and I appreciate that. I want to see all 518 people back and working in September, obviously.
Right. And that is a commitment that we, the school committee, the town is making. 12-month personnel like myself, superintendent, custodians, 12-month secretaries, we've had 20 pays and there's six left, and that's about 77. I checked all these line items. We're right there. Like I said, the only one we're really taking a look at is substitutes in the personnel area. We're all set there. I, I talked about out-of-district, we know what the problem is there. We're trying to close that gap. Diana's been in contact, and as have I, been in contact with extraordinary relief. And they're moving things out to be able to accommodate that. We're going to apply for that. Diana, is that done true?
Yes, that's true. I'm almost done with the application, with doing the form.
Right, and that would help immensely. But we think we have this, hopefully, we're going to be able to close that gap of the extraordinary from OOD. Materials, as you can see, that's where we're going to probably close that gap. I have only in here for right now projected electricity and natural gas. A lot of the other materials I haven't projected on what we're going to be able to spend for that. And I'll, I'll do that over the next month or so and see what we're going to have to spend between May and the end of June. But hopefully, it's not a whole active lot. We've basically shut down the buildings. We put them in unoccupied mode. So we should be lowering our electricity costs. We might have some savings there. Natural gas, we had a pretty mild winter. So we think we're going to be okay there. We're definitely going to be on the budget there. So that's an opportunity to shift those monies over to out-of-district placements. The town did step up. Jim and Nancy committed $100,000 for things that we need to get for COVID-19 or the pandemic. They committed $100,000 for that. Nancy, and we, the $15,000 we spent on Wampertuck to clean on that, I think it was Saturday of the first week. That was taken care of by that. So kudos to the town for stepping up. So kudos to the town for stepping up for, and we bought extra paper towels, we bought extra, as much as we can, cleaning materials and hand sanitizers. We're offloading those costs, not that we're offloading, but we're putting those costs into a COVID-19 special fund that we're capturing all these costs. So I don't know what else I can tell you about this budget for fiscal year '20, other than those are the things that we're looking at, keeping an eye on. OOD is one of our main focuses.
Can I ask you a question? It's my case.
Sure.
Well, this is just out of, I just don't know the answer, but is there any way with gas prices dropping steadily? Is there any way we can save money in the long run by purchasing any natural gas product? You know, our natural gas, can we load up tanks that we have now while the price is low, or is that set?
No, it's not set. It's definitely for diesel fuel and for gas, we go to the town bond, Mike, for that. And that is, Mike, we, we put together, back when Al was one of the DPW, we put together a brand-new program. We contributed to that. And we put underground tanks in down at the highway barn. And it's market price, whatever their market price is minus taxes. So.
Right, so I mean, I would assume that they, if they're killing tanks while the price is low.
Yeah, they actually, actually, Mike and Nancy sent me an email the other day wondering why we spiked up a little bit more than last year in diesel fuel. And I told them, we took on the Metco one for the high school, middle school one. And they, oh, okay, yep, that's it. That's exactly what. So they're looking at those things too, Mike.
Yep, great. Paul, I have a couple of questions. Number one, first one, the Bourndale, is that an expense that we have or is that all funded by the participants?
It's all funded by the participants.
Okay, so is there, is there no savings there?
I didn't say that. We have some funding, we have some expense on the overnight and the coordinators. We probably have maybe six or seven thousand. And we will, yeah. It's probably less than 10. We probably provide some of the buses, so we pay for that.
Okay. The bar, the bar is, are you sure it was 85 is just probably the, what the payments that hasn't been received yet?
Actually, they have received it. We're going to return those checks.
Okay, all right.
We held, we held the checks from all the students. So we're going to return those checks when we go back to school. This money you see here, the 24, 763, that is for the amount of sales for the, some of the kids sold. So if you bought some wrapping paper, I think it, I think that's what they sell, they sell some things, that's the money that's left over for that. So that stays in the Bourndale account.
Okay, good. And then. I have one other.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I have one other question. The bus lease, is this, are we in the first, second, or third year of that bus lease?
We're in the first year of the bus lease. For the main, I'm sorry, for the main, the main amount of them, I think it was 14, 13 or 14, I think is, we're on the first year of that one. We have to turn back in one, the handicap van, that was a five-year lease, the handicap bus, excuse me, the wheelchair bus. We have to turn that back in and we are going to plan on getting two more buses for that.
Yeah, I was just, I was just assuming the new bus lease is going to be a lot cheaper or less expensive, I should say.
Yeah, it probably will be. I haven't, I've got that, that's all my other things to do between now and May.
Okay.
Well, I have a question. Yes, about that Bourndale, the 24 and change, that's money that the current sixth-grade students earned, raised, rather?
Yes.
Okay, so, and so I didn't catch what you said about how it's going to be returned? Or are we going to like kind of put that aside?
It's not going to be returned. It can't be returned.
Right, but will it be set aside for that class because they did raise that money?
Um, I, I, we haven't, sort of discussion led. I, I don't know yet. Ryan, Ryan did send out an email the other day. He wants to do something with that.
Yes.
So we'll, we'll discuss that, I think, a little bit more for that sixth grade, yes.
Yeah, because I mean, that technically is like their money, not, you know, they did all the work, all the stuff. Okay, thanks.
But wait, but I can't, I can't return it to them, you know what I mean?
No, but if they wanted to, but we can hold it for them. Like, we can just hold on to that, or?
I, we're going to, we're going to take a look. I'll get back to you on that. I don't know yet.
And Paul, I apologize if I missed it, but for the high, for the high school sports that would occur in the spring, have we already collected fees for that? Is that something that we would have to return to families or have we not received that?
We have collected some fees for spring sports. We were in the middle of collecting that because we were just finishing up the basketball tournament.
Yep.
If you remember, we had just lost, I think. And then with the finals were going on, so we hadn't quite started spring yet before we went out, so.
And I'll just add a layer to that. Again, as I mentioned in the leadership report, fees in general will be something the committee is going to have to have a conversation about at a later date. Fees that have been collected, do they get returned? Do we have them, you know, maintaining people's salaries so we maintain the staffing levels? It will have to have that conversation at a future date. And I've asked Mr. Donlan to put together a list of all of the financial implications of COVID-19, especially all of our, our fees and offset costs so we can have that conversation.
Yeah, my concern is someone paid for softball and then all of a sudden we don't have a softball season?
We have softball.
Right, I don't want to take $300 from some family for a sport they never played.
Not having softball.
Right.
Good point.
Right.
For another day.
All right, are there any other questions, Paul?
No, I just had a question, Ron, about high school real quick.
May I ask one more question, though?
Go ahead, go ahead.
On, on, on spring sports, whether to help or not, and I guess I'm assuming they won't be, but people, coaches or other staff members who are under contract will still get paid, correct?
It's the reason, that's an excellent question, Mr. Hayes, and it's the reason I think we should have to have a conversation with the committee at large because we have a lot of outside contracts potentially that would need to be paid as well. And I also appreciate Mr. Long's perspective, like, well, if you've paid for a season and there's not a season or there's a partial season, so if you'd be so kind to grant us a little bit of time on that, Mr. Donlan will put together the full list and we'll have a more deep conversation about all of the fees and the potential implications of paying part some, all of the fee. Is that okay? I know that doesn't answer your question at all, but it, I would want to make sure that we have all the right information to present to the committee to make the most informed decisions about it, and I, I appreciate there's still a lot of question marks on it.
No, that's fine. I appreciate that.
Just one more question about grading. So for the high school, we've got quarters, so they've done quarter one, quarter two. Those grades are already solidly on transcripts. Quarter three is also.
Yep.
And then it's the fourth that will be submitted as meeting benchmark or not, or whatever the terminology ends up being.
Credit, no credit.
Credit, no credit.
And just to.
Go ahead. Just a GPA would be based on an average of those three terms?
GPA would be on only semester one.
Okay.
So you'd calculate on semester one. So what I, because I saw the, the notes come up, they're like, oh, I've got a couple of the questions on, on all things high school grades. What I have here for you as part of the rollout is a detailed explanation of all things high school grades. I'm going to read part of it to you, but know that for community members who have high school kiddos, they'll just get this.
Okay.
So here's like, if I can give you a snapshot, and it's right from our high school team, so I have my apologies for reading it, but I want to make sure I have all the right information. GPA for 2019, '20 will be calculated using semester one grades only. Quarter three closes on April 3rd, we talked about that. Students connect with teachers, pass in whatever homework they've got, work they've got until the 8th. Report cards are published on the 13th. For quarter three, a floor of 55 will be the floor, if you will, established to allow all students who might fail quarter three to still pass for the year. That way, they couldn't potentially get like a 20 necessarily, do you see what I'm saying? And be eligible for summer, for summer school as necessary. Quarter four, courses will be graded just as credit, no credit. And it goes into some other like explanation about what if you had a full-year course? What if you had a course that was just for a quarter? What about the selective? Like, it goes into some further detail about that, but if, again, if that works for you, what I do is have this go out to our high school community members who want to know more depth information about the grading criteria for high school and GPA calculation and all of that.
And if someone has a specific question on that, because you're at Janice, she's forwarded me a couple of emails, I think you're on them too, just regarding the GPA. So if people have specific questions afterwards, should they reach out to you directly or is there an email address on there saying this is who you should contact if you have GPA-level questions?
There's not, but I'll add that there. The high school team will be the folks who are usually, you know, most equipped, especially our counselors, most equipped to answer questions about GPA calculations and how that looks on a transcript. But what I'll do is, I've got the, the draft here in front of me, I'll amend it to have some contact information as well, because I'm sure families want to just make sure they understand how their kiddos' grades are being calculated, especially with thinking about, you know, valedictorian in future years and those sorts of things. I'll add that, it's a good point, we hadn't added it.
Okay.
So just to be clear, you said only the first terms?
First semester.
Okay, first semester, okay, so the first two.
End of quarters.
So not the third?
Third and fourth, no.
Okay.
Yeah, because the middle school does trimesters and high school does quarters. So this is going to be quarter four for the high school, or trimester three for the middle school.
Okay. What's, is, well, I don't know, is this, what's the benefit of not including, like you just, it would just be a deep, more difficult calculation in a sense, but doable?
Well, because they're, the short answer is because they're ending at an awkward moment, COVID-19 didn't, didn't start on a convenient time for us, unfortunately.
Yeah.
And so there are some students who may have assignments that are out, but that are in the building, that we don't have access to. But is that fair that they didn't get their assignment for that grade necessarily? That's a good question. And so we started asking all these really complex items that we didn't have a solid answer for, so we said, rather than penalizing or giving other kids advantage, we're going to count that as sort of credit, no credit, and only do the GPA for the numbers we feel we have 100% of the information in.
And I'm sure like Desi will provide further potential guidance on what that means for juniors becoming seniors, GPAs and college applications and.
They're going to provide guidance on graduation requirements, which I think is sort of their, their venue. And then individual school districts are usually working together to unify the response around how we're counting these things. Because again, we appreciate that a situat graduate will go and apply for a college that a Norwell graduate might go and apply for. So we want to have some level of continuity amongst the high schools as well, and that's what they've been working on to generate this for.
Right, just thinking of those juniors who won't, they're going to be applying for colleges before they have any, their newest grades to submit will be from this winter.
Yeah, they will be semester one and then by the time they've applied, they're already in their senior year.
Right.
Which is a whole nother commentary on like the college application process and how soon it's starting now. Miss Mon, I'm sure you're going to appreciate that.
Yeah.
It continues to creep back into, deep into junior year at this point, you know? But yeah, so what we'll do is we'll make sure we get that information out to high school families in particular. They can go through this in greater detail and then we'll have some contact info at the bottom about questions regarding calculus of GPA.
I'm sure colleges will have things to say about that when they're looking at admissions as well.
I'm, again, this is a little, this is my own opinion. I'm hopeful that colleges come together and have some thoughtful conversation about the way in which they do admissions in general. And I, and while COVID-19's been a huge challenge, I also think it forces some honest conversations about how we do think about education, standards-based grading, the graduation requirements, requirements for college admissions, like those are all things that we've always been wanting to talk about, having deep conversations about, and education as a sector hasn't. And this forces some of those hard conversations, but important conversations nonetheless. So I would agree with you, and I'm hopeful that, especially in Massachusetts, that there's some honest conversation at the graduate level, you know, the post-high school level.
Great, thank you. Before we get into the next public comment section, so Kim, before you open up the line, we did get one other email that I'll just read out, that Janice had forwarded to me, then we'll open it up to people on the phone unless, Janice, you got any other emails. So Robin Glazer had reached. All right, so let me do this one first and you can do the rest. So Robin Glazer reached out and she said that while there was a bit of lag for the classroom Zoom videos, they seemed to work really well, at least for her kids, so it's some good feedback for the Zoom use to begin with. There's a question about the special education fund. Does the special ed fund set aside, is that set aside on an annual basis going forward at town meeting or in general?
Yep, it's not set aside necessarily at town meeting. It's, it's established through town meeting and then it's set aside as part of the financial forecast and you use free cash for that.
There was a comment about starting before Labor Day. Could teachers give students an assignment for an hour each day for the following week when they'd be off? It would be great if the PD day, and then there was a comment about whether the PD day could be on the last week of August.
We'll take the under advisement from Ms. Arnold, absolutely.
And then just one comment regarding April vacation. So several students do have already purchased a five-day RMV driver education class for this week. So if, you know, as we look at the April vacation week, I think it's prudent to at least make sure that we look across anything that students could be doing to make sure that, you know, if teachers are still giving out curriculum, I know you said that kids would either be in class for like, doing classwork half a day or, you know, can stagger when they do the work, but just making sure we, you know, take a look at anything that high school students could be doing or middle school, just to make sure that we're not, you know, negatively impacting their schedule or having them miss work and having it being completed.
It's an excellent point. I want to just underscore, thank you for that, and underscore the value of this idea of asynchronous, because we'll certainly do our, our level best to make sure that we think about all the things that families are doing, and I'm certain we're going to miss something because every family is so unique, especially in this circumstance. So the value of asynchronous learning is that if there is a family commitment, your student could do those assignments in full days, Monday and Tuesday and Wednesday maybe, and not do them on Thursday and Friday, or do them on a Saturday, or, or, you know, do part of them on an evening and so on, just so that families still have some flexibility to, again, navigate COVID-19 as a family and still try to navigate the commitments that aren't canceled that have been rescheduled as well.
Almost a benefit of distance learning, a flexible base.
It is, it really is. It's the silver lining of it, for sure.
All right, Janice, was there anything else that you received before we try to open the lineup again?
Yes, I have a question from Laura Schneider on Arrowood Drive. You answered most of her question about the grading, but she did want to know if the grade, since only for the high school, since we're only counting the first semester, will it be counted as a full-year grade?
There is a weighting system that they do have, and so for the year-long courses, a weighted average of the first three quarters will be 40, 40, 20, will be used to calculate the final average. In addition, students must earn credit from quarter four in order to earn all four credits awarded for a full-year course. So they'll redistribute the weighting, 40, 40, 20, and the fourth quarter, again, doesn't count for that GPA necessarily.
Okay, so it's not, not cut and dry that, because we're still, because they're still going to be, they'll be quarter on quarter graded on this last term.
They will get credits, right? But they're not, they're going to receive qualitative feedback versus quantitative feedback for quarter four at the high school.
Okay.
So you're not going to get an 87 necessarily, you get credit or no credit.
Okay. So I guess, like for an example, if somebody had, you know, an 87 in their class going into the closure, what would it look like if they got credit for the remainder of the year?
So your question about the 87 requires some caveats. If you mean, do they have an 87 average? Well, then we have to look at their quarters, right? So all the calculus is done by quarter. So your 87 average would add another quarter to it, right? So again, that weighting of 40, 40, 20 would reweight your average for the third quarter? So the better question, and maybe it would be helpful to include an example right here in the document we send out, would be like, if your average is a 90, 91, and 87, what does this look like for the fourth quarter? Like, we could do something like that to help illustrate for families as well, which we don't currently have on the document, but given that question, we can certainly add so people have that example to think about the calculus. Do you think that would be helpful?
Yeah.
We'll do that.
I think that would be helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
And then in terms of the finals, if they. And then in terms of the finals, if they, if we're still out of school going into June, would we cancel, have we given any thought to how finals would occur?
We're not there yet, because we're still hopeful that May 4th is when we return. We have had some initial conversations about that, but they're very early, and I wouldn't want, I don't think we're ready to present anything yet.
Okay, expect that to be the next question of, well, how does the final impact my final grade?
Yes, understandably so.
You would keep it all still, the pass, fail, through the year, even if we returned to school?
That's the intention. That gives us some flexibility if it does get extended, and you could still be pass/fail if you needed to. We may revisit that depending on any new guidance that we get. Again, expecting some graduation requirement guidance from DESI as well. So this, full disclosure, this may be up for adjustment as needed.
Janice, was there any other emails that came in?
No, that was it.
So Kim, if you want to, can you please try to open up the phone line again? And for those people that are told by the automated voice that it's their turn to speak, what is it? Pressing star six to be able to speak in the call. Is there someone on the phone?
Can you check the mute button, maybe? It's not muted. First caller, are you there? All right.
Q and A session is over. All participants are unmuted. Q and A session has started.
If I could just underscore what Mr. Long said.
One more sec. It's still showing that it's live, so just give it one more moment, please.
Now, just to underscore, as we're waiting, what Mr. Long said. If you had a question but you couldn't get it in right here, email us, we'll get the answer to you right away. It may also be answered in the document that families receive tomorrow morning. And again, while we're waiting, I'm participating in a town PSA tomorrow morning as well, where we do like the YouTube video, and you'll have myself and whoever else is going to be there from Board of Selectmen and Mr. Boudreau. And we'll give some of the same information, again, via that platform as well. So between all the messenger information we've sent out, putting that document out, the PSA, we should get lots of information out. And if you have that information, still have questions, please feel free to reach out. We've got folks at Central Office, men in the office every day for questions and via email, you know, all the time.
No, we've given it our best shot. It doesn't appear to be going to a caller or allowing them to speak. Someone from Atlanta, Georgia is unmuted, but they're not speaking. I can go to the next caller. Caller, are you there?
All right, so if there's anyone on the phone that couldn't get through, or that are watching this video and this meeting and have any questions, I recommend just reaching out to the school committee or the superintendent. And as I said before, we'll respond via email and then bring it up in the next school committee meeting, just so that the entire audience can hear the question and the answer that was provided. All right, so at this time, there's no other correspondence. Was there any other business that people wanted to bring up in this meeting?
Q and A session is over.
No, I would just like to, you know, reiterate again, in case anybody has trouble hearing, that you can email, you know, myself or anybody on the committee with any questions, and we'll try to answer them as quickly as possible.
And then future agenda items, I know we're going to talk about the rest of the school calendar. Were there any other agenda items that people wanted to put out there for the next meeting?
And we just underscore the items that we talked about, the leadership report, yeah. April vacation would be helpful for our next meeting, followed by, let's talk about fees and so on, and then opportunities to maybe renegotiate some of our external contracts, only based on some of the services that aren't currently being provided.
Do we need to schedule that meeting?
What I might recommend is maybe, as we typically do, Ms. Limbala and myself, start the conversation. We do a survey of the committee members' availability and work on the technology as well, and get a meeting as soon as folks are available.
So the last item on the agenda then is the superintendent search?
I have a technical difficulty, my LAN line is going dead. I'll call it, I'm on my other phone.
We're supposed to be hearing from Jim.
Yeah. Jim Hardy, are you on the phone?
I'm sorry?
No, I can hear, this is my case, I can hear everything.
All participants are muted, and they can unmute themselves.
Janice or Jim Hardy, are you on the phone?
Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Jim to present the finalists for the school committee. I mean, finalists for superintendent.
Good evening, everyone.
Hello.
I hope everybody has a hearing.
We can. He can hear us if we're muted.
There were 25 candidates that submitted application packages for the position of superintendent of schools in Situate. The Situate Search Committee reviewed all the applications, and after a series of preliminary interviews and a period of discussion, unanimously voted to submit the following three candidates to the school committee for consideration as the next superintendent of schools. I've listed the candidates in alphabetical order. First is William E. Burkhead, who's a principal of Montemoy High School in Howard. He's been in that position since 2014. He was previously served as a principal of Normanan Middle School in New Bedford. He has a master's in education, a CAGS or a certificate of advanced graduate study in educational leadership from Bridgewater State, and is currently enrolled in a doctoral program for organizational leadership. The second candidate is James T. Mealy, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations in North Andover, the North Andover Public Schools. Dr. Mealy has served in his current position since July of 2009. He previously served as Chief Operations Officer for the Nashua School District, Nashua, New Hampshire. He has a master's degree in business administration and has earned a doctorate from New England College in Hennecker in Educational Leadership, Hennecker, New Hampshire. The third finalist is Andrew G. Stevens, current principal of Lexington High School in Lexington, Mass. Dr. Stevens has served in his current position since 2017. He previously served as principal of Duxbury High School. He has a master's degree in education, a CAES or a certificate of advanced educational studies in educational administration, and has earned a doctorate in curriculum teaching and organizational leadership from Northeastern University. All three candidates have been contacted and are very excited to begin the next phase of the process. I would be remiss if I did not pay a compliment to the 17 members of the search committee who, despite the pandemic blowing up in the middle of our process, managed to rally together and conduct thoughtful interviews on the Zoom platform, and had very thoughtful discussions and deliberations, and ultimately came to unanimous agreement on these three finalists. If anybody has any questions at this point, I'll simply, before I move into what's next.
I just want to thank you too, Jim, for leading the charge and getting us through the interviews at such a trying time. You know, it really, I think people said you had a very calming effect on the chaos that was going around us, going on around us. So thank you.
Well, thank you for that. It was much like a duck on a pond, very calm on the surface, but keep paddling frantically under the water. I'll be honest with you, this is... So the next step would be, if we followed the original timeline, would be conducting site visits. Obviously, that can't happen in the traditional format. What has, what we have had some success with in the last three weeks is conducting what we call virtual site visits, where we set up something like Zoom, and the school committee members can talk to member, people within the candidate's districts. And we set up a schedule where they log in, log off, and then that can be supplemented with telephone conversations as well. Same can be done for the candidates who want to speak to people in Situate and get, you know, a better sense of what's going on, in addition to the homework that they've already done. And then we could set it up in reverse, where if the candidates are in the Zoom conference and people in Situate would be, like different stakeholder groups, we'd be able to log in and have little group meetings, but virtually, rather than what would traditionally be done within the district. And then in the last phase of that would be the final interviews. And obviously, if restrictions are still continuing, we'd have to make some amendments similar to what you're doing for your meetings, in that people could be, limited number of people could be at the meeting, conducting the interview because of the 10-person rule. But where, these would be public interviews, it could be livestreamed on cable TV with some limited ability to call in. Yeah, if that's what you wanted to do, I could begin setting that up so that some of those virtual conversations could start next week. My only challenge is going to be that in listening to the previous part of the meeting, a lot of your virtual onlineing is also going to be kicking off next week, which might make it difficult to get, like, staff members and teachers and so forth to be able to participate in these things.
If you were, um, hell, it could be early, like late afternoon, maybe early evening, you might have higher participation.
Right. Jim, I had a couple of questions. I had a couple of questions. When you talk about the interview of the final candidate by the school committee and the possibility of streaming it on cable TV, would that be live? I mean, and can you, is the technology there for all the school committee members and the candidates to be on TV at the same time, like Zooming on TV? Is that possible?
I think, and DESI probably answered that. Mike, is DESI there?
Yeah, hold on one second, he's coming right back.
Okay. I mean, that would be an answer for him, I mean, a question for him.
To get everyone, we'd have to do something almost exactly like this.
On Zoom, could we do it on Zoom?
I cannot put Zoom on TV, no. But we could, we could, we could record it, yes.
Are there other black ones that would work better, like Zoom?
Zoom is great, but if you, if you're, if you want, if you want to include the television aspect, that makes it trickier. The television, we're limited with that.
So is there a method, so we'd have to have five school committee members and a candidate in the same vicinity to do that physically, to get everyone on at the same time?
Yeah, well, I mean, again, we could, we could do something very similar to this, but physically, to see, to see everybody, it would be Zoom.
I'm at home, I'm not, I can't see the candidate, and that's my question. Can we all be in the same room? Can that be?
We have to be six feet apart.
My understanding is that, I had some preliminary conversations with Karen Connolly, because they were doing some meetings with the Board of Selectmen, and while one member video-conferenced in, the rest of them were in the room. They just maintained their six-foot social distancing. It was maybe a bigger table setup than you might otherwise be used to. And then the camera for their meeting was just on a wide pin the whole time.
We just, we cannot have more than 10 people in a room at the same time. Simple as that.
Correct, so that would be the limit. So it would be basically, you know, the five of you, the candidate, and whoever your clerk is, at a minimum.
And a camera person.
And a camera person. So you're almost, you're almost there now. And then anybody else, like I could wait in the hallway, you know, bring the candidate in, introduce them and leave, so that I'm not counted as one of the, as one of the 10.
That's usually how we do it anyway.
Right, so, I mean, it can, it, it, is it typical? No, of course not. And we're not in typical times, but we're trying to accommodate, you know, not only the provisions of the pandemic, but also the reality of the importance of this, of this process.
I would like to add that the timing of the interviews would, might be coinciding with an increase in cases of COVID. So if the point of the interview is to have the school committee ask the questions and the candidate answer them, there's no, like, Q and A from the public at that moment. So I would be comfortable with doing a Zoom meeting where everybody can be in a home, safe and sound, and then taping it and airing it on public access.
Zoom does give you, Zoom does give you the capability of the recording. And I know that there's been further guidance from the Attorney General's Office regarding video conferencing, and their, their position is, is that if it's recorded and then made available, like a YouTube channel or on the, on the district's website, or the town's website, or something like that, where people could watch it, maybe that's satisfactory to them.
Yeah, I think that just adds to our level of transparency that we're, the visual.
Anybody else want to sign in?
I think you're right, I agree with Janice. Sorry, go ahead, Peter.
I mean, I couldn't even attend tonight's meeting because of work, so.
Right.
And it's not as bad yet.
But I felt like our Zoom first round interviews were very simple, and you did get a, you got a feel for people. Is that better?
You can hear them great on television, but you can't hear them on the phone.
All right, hold on one second, Mike.
I agree with Janice. I think coming from our initial round of interviews, and everything went really smoothly on Zoom, so, and we did get a good feel for all of our candidates, that I think that recording it so that the public can see the face-to-face interaction, sort of, that next layer would be good for our transparency in the whole process.
Can we not invite the public to join the Zoom meeting and just mute them? Is that an option?
Yes.
So we could do both.
We generally don't take, we generally don't take questions from the public.
Right.
The public, this is a school committee interview.
That's correct. It's, you're absolutely correct. It's your interview. The public's had a number of opportunities to participate in the process. The public was represented by, very well, by a 17-member search committee. This is now in your hands as a school committee, ultimately your final... Um, this is now in your hands as a school committee, uh, ultimately your, your final decision. And, um, it's important that you get the opportunity to ask the questions you want to ask.
So, I mean, I'm, that being the case, I mean, I'm, Janice, with, uh, um, you described it as a we Zoom interview. I have no problem with that.
Okay.
And then it can be broadcast to the public.
Yeah, your search committee was roughly 17 folks. So you all were able to Zoom and it wasn't, yes, an issue, correct?
No, I mean, I, the committee gave me latitude to kind of act as the moderator and we, we basically after everybody was logged in, um, we simply muted everybody and then as they went around, it's a list of 17 prepared questions. So whoever was asking, like Janice asked question one, she did the intro and asked question one. Then whoever was asking question two, which I believe was Nicole, when it came to time to add for that, I simply unmuted Nicole and muted Janice. So there wasn't a lot of background noise in the Zoom conference. You didn't hear people shuffling paper or doors closing or things like that. And it, it seemed to work pretty well. We just progressed down through, um, the prepared questions that the, the search committee had.
Okay.
So, so would we? I'll let Janice and Nicole speak for how they feel it worked.
I mean, I was a little nervous, but once, you, you get used to it and it's no, not a problem at all. Yeah, I felt very comfortable with it.
I did also.
Jim, will you be forwarding the full school committee the, uh, final application packet?
Um, I sent the. Okay, I sent you the, the, okay, I sent you, I sent to Janice because I didn't have everybody's email. Um, the, uh, the, the memo that I just read at the open, at the opening of this and, um, each of the candidate's full application packets.
Okay, great, thanks.
Those were, and you should have those, uh, in a PDF format. You'd be able to scroll.
Great, thank you.
And Janice, are we also going to be able to get the general comments that came back from the search committee? Just in terms of, you know, I liked this answer to this question because of whatever reason or this gave me some concern, just so that as we go in and formulate our own questions, we can build them based on some of that feedback if we want to?
Um, yeah, I think Nicole and I could, you know, fill you in on that.
Yeah.
I don't think that would be a problem. I don't think, I can't really honestly think of any issues that there were. But we, I'll look at my notes.
And these are going to be two-hour interviews?
It'll be as long as you need them to be.
I think two hours, see, is that normal?
For us?
Well, I mean.
Or normal for everyone else.
Like two candidates on, on one night and.
Oh, oh, okay.
But, you know, when we were doing them in person, we'd have two candidates come in one night and one or two come in the next night, I'd say. So we wouldn't limit it to a time.
Right. And if that's, if you wanted to interview multiple candidates in one, any one particular night, then yes, you would, you would need to put up end time.
Yeah. So.
I will say when we did do the three in one night, that was a lot.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I was just saying, when we did the three in one night, that was a lot. So I don't know if we want to do more than one.
Right.
If it could potentially go two hours, that'd be four hours. Just something to think about.
Yeah. Yeah, I think if we, we happen to have two in one night, that would be fine.
Yeah.
So if you, if you wanted to do, do you, do you think you'd want to do the virtual site visits before or after the interviews now?
Um, I think, I'm not, never having gone through that part, um, I don't know if Mike Long and Mike Hayes can speak to what, if it matters or if they have a preference.
I mean, last time we did.
We would have the site committee and we would spend a day at each candidate's, uh, town and talk to. And any people in the school system and, and town as we could, but, and, uh, that would be one day at a time, you know?
And last time we did the interview, we did four interviews. We eliminated one person and then did three site visits. So, I mean, we could, I, I'm fine going either way. We can either get feedback from the person's, you know, home district and then use that to start, you know, framing our own questions or we can ask questions to the person first and then follow up with the, the site. I mean, I, I'm indifferent either way on how we do it, but.
Right.
I agree with Mike.
For me personally, having already been part of it, I can see, I, you guys might have more questions though.
Just with people's availability.
I'm sorry, Nicole, will you?
Sorry. Sorry. Yeah, I was just saying for us, Janice and I have already gotten to know them through the interview process, but the other school committee members are coming at it. They might want to learn more about them before site visits almost. But I, I guess we could share our notes prior.
Yeah. Um, I don't know, Peter, do you?
You can if you want. I, I, firstly, since I don't know anything about any of these candidates, I would rather talk to them first. And maybe we can, then we can most appropriately position questions to those other members of the community more, more accurately rather than just going in blindly. That's how I feel personally.
Okay.
There's, um, I mean, there's good points to doing it either way. Um, Peter's point about, uh, at being able to ask some questions of the candidates and then follow up on the responses, uh, to those questions while talking to people in the district. So that, you know, candidate A said that he was, he or she, you know, he was intricately involved in this project. What was his involvement from your viewpoint?
Right.
And you can, you know, verify the information that's being presented, um, in the interview. The other side for the, they'd be on the counter for the other argument. It gives you an opportunity to, to lay up a, a groundwork and foundation for the questions you asked during the interview because you can kind of sort out some of the stuff that you want to know, but you don't want to, you don't want to necessarily have to ask a question in a, in an interview to get that information. So there's pros and cons to both ways of doing it. There's no wrong way. Um, it's simply a matter of, well, one, the circumstances and two, the timing. And given both of those, it might be prudent to do the interviews first, um, and then follow up with virtual site visits.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have no problem in doing it that way unless, yeah, we can do the interviews first. I don't think it, it's. You know, Nicole and I already.
When?
Yeah.
So when might you want to, uh, look at scheduling these interviews?
Does anybody have any conflict next week?
No, I, I.
I'm on the, uh, the principal search committee as well, so that schedule is, I think, is in process of being determined.
Yeah. I think that and our next school committee meeting, which is soon with April vacation, it'll be decided.
Oh, boy, yeah. Well, I mean, if we could do it all before that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's only three.
I have no conflict on three all week.
So do you want me to try?
Don't, don't schedule it around me. Don't schedule it around me. I can make it work.
So do you want me to try to do two in one night or one per night, three nights?
Um.
And if two, what would the start times be?
Good question.
Um, I don't know, maybe, I think we're all pretty much free, so.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I have no problem with, uh, one over three consecutive nights if we could.
I agree. I agree with Mike.
It might be, it might be easier for everybody to do that. We could, is six o'clock, uh, too early, too late?
I'm fine with whatever.
Six o'clock is fine for me.
That works.
Okay. So if we were to try to do something over three nights next week, starting at six o'clock, um, that would work for folks?
Work for me.
Yeah, it would.
Yep.
Okay. And the beauty of that is you'd also have an opportunity to broadcast, um, the interviews uh, prior to, um, any of the site visits. So some of the people within the district might have an opportunity to get to know the candidates a little bit, um, before speaking to them via any type of, uh, virtual site visit.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, I mean, I guess we have to determine who the site visit team's going to be, right?
Yes.
Well, it's going to be all, all on.
I think if, since it's being virtual, you probably can, all can participate.
Right.
If you wanted to.
There's not, nobody, nobody at the district. Nobody at work, so.
I know, but I've, I've been on, like, I've, I've been on site team visits where people, uh, in more normal times where it wasn't the entire school committee, it was a couple of members of the school committee and then other members of, whether it's a teacher or administrator or whatever, uh, uh, go in person, but, you know, that's not really possible. But we might want to think about if we want to include in that site visit Zoom session, um, you know, someone else within the school system.
Right.
Okay.
Doing the interviews first allows us a little bit of time to set that up.
Yep.
And Janice, how do you want us to coordinate the questions that we have? Do you want, how do you want to split up the questions just so that we don't all walk in with the same five? Do you want us to each work with you to coordinate on like I'll, if Peter takes finance and I take something else and.
What is the next step? Yeah, I mean, what is the next step for the, um, what questions get asked, I guess?
Um, well, the, uh, what we try to do is, um, make sure that we're not asking 12 questions on budget and finance and nothing on curriculum and instruction. So what I, what they offer is, uh, for each of you, if you, say, develop five questions and you send them to me, I will compile them. Uh, I will look for, um, you know, a lot, you know, heavy, heavy areas of question and maybe some light areas of question and, um, send you back a draft document prior, you know, um, depending on how fast everybody got me the, the five questions, I could turn the document around in a, in a day, um, get them back to you ahead of time so you could take a look at them, put them in some sort of order so that you would know who's asking question one, who's asking question two, who's asking question three, you know, so forth.
Okay.
Does that sound?
What we did, yeah, similar to.
Well, it's what we did for the search committee, right?
Okay.
My only question.
How long do you think?
My only question in that regard would be if, if we have, I mean, 25 questions, that's going to take the, probably a long time to get through. I mean, are we going to each ask five questions or are we going to whittle that down or what do you think?
Well, we asked 17 questions in 75 minutes in the first round, so.
Well, um, Mike, Mike.
Yeah.
I have a question for the mics. Um, what was the format for the last search?
We just went, um, we had a list of questions and, um, each member asked a question and we went down the line and back and forth. And then we also had, uh, when we were asking our question, um, we had an opportunity for any of the other school committee members to ask a follow-up on that specific question.
And if I remember right, we had two, we had two one night, so I think it was like a 90-minute, uh, interview. I mean, we had a set end time that we had to meet. So I think typically we ask like three or four questions plus the follow-ups. So we stayed within 75 minutes.
Okay.
I think there are a couple areas.
You broke up there. How many questions each did you ask?
I think it was three or four each and then any follow-ups that we might have had based on an answer the candidate provided.
There are a couple, for each candidate, there's, from our initial search committee, there's, each one really I have follow-up questions to some of their answers too, that I think will be helpful. Um, so just, I don't even know what I'm going to, trying to ask, but I just want to weed through that and make sure that I include it for my questions, but they might come from all different areas. But I guess, I don't want to have repeat questions, I guess is what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, Janice, can we get the list of questions that the search committee asked?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Like, I don't want to have repeat questions, but at the same time I have some areas that I'd like clarity on that they had.
Yes.
Or they went down a, a particular pathway on a question and I would like to readdress that same question, sort of.
Well, that's why I asked about the comments that the search committee had so that we could either ask a different, frame the question a different way or ask some kind of follow-up that would get a, a better answer than what they may have provided the first time.
I have really detailed notes, so I'm happy to share.
Yeah, and having, having the ability to have follow-up questions leads to a more conversational interview rather than just, you know, like a Jeopardy! show and, you know, flip a card and get it.
Yeah, that's what I was kind of looking for, Mike. Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
All right.
Janice, I just, he. Janice, I just emailed you the, the file, the, uh, the questions the search committee asked. I'm going to forward that to the rest of the members.
All right.
So Janice, when do you want our questions, or Jim, by the end of, end of the day Friday? Is that enough time if we're going to try to do interviews next week?
Um.
Uh, end of, end of day Friday, I would have, I could send them back to you, um, Saturday. Um, you'd have them to look at and we have an opportunity Monday, you know, probably Monday to make any tweaks or changes. I'm assuming the first interview will probably start Tuesday, but, um, until I talk to the, uh, the three candidates, I won't know for 100% sure.
All right, well, um, Friday, well, uh, I guess it's kind of moot because nobody's really going to church, but Friday is Good Friday, so.
And Passover is next week too.
Yeah, Passover, yeah, Passover is the eighth.
Wednesday starts, Passover?
Passover, the eighth.
The eighth, which is what day?
Wednesday.
Wednesday. Wednesday night.
So Janice, if we have any religious conflicts in days, we'll let you know.
Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We could, you know.
I think we just have to make sure.
The passion's over at 3:00 PM, so.
Um, but Jim, we have to get a, an agenda out for these in a timely fashion, don't we?
Yeah, we'd have to post them. Um, so to do something on Monday, it has to be at the town clerk's office before close of burst business Thursday, Thursday.
Yep.
Which is tomorrow.
Right. So, um.
With the same token, you can, you can, you could post, um, um, superintendent search interviews starting at six o'clock, um, for every night next week and then cancel the ones you don't need.
Okay, that sounds good.
If you can, yeah, there might be, it might be a good idea to simply post Monday through Friday, six o'clock superintendent search interviews and then.
Okay.
Figure, figure out which ones we don't need. Or maybe you want to, if you want to skip Wednesday, just don't include Wednesday.
Well, I, I gotta check, I think it's Tuesday night. I think, I think it's.
Oh, Tuesday night.
But I think it's, I think it's Tuesday night because Passover is actually Wednesday. It'll be over at sundown. I should check that.
Yeah, so is it, is it 6:00 PM Tuesday night it starts or something? I don't have a calendar in front of me that has that information in it.
Yeah, sunset's around 7:30, so.
Yeah, it should be all right. Um, but just for clarity on the posting, um, are we going to include the, uh, Zoom log-on info? And are we inviting the public to attend those Zoom videos, meetings?
Well, I don't think we're, I don't know, that was going to be my question to Jim. Is this, uh, is it?
I don't know that he was not available to, yeah, the public. I, I don't know that we can include the public to be, to actually log on to the Zoom interviews and watch them live. Um. to the Zoom interviews and watch them live, um.
I thought we said earlier that we could broadcast them the following night.
We could.
Yes.
But my question, so I don't, I'm, I'm just, I'm, I'm not sure of the technology, Pete, but I, I thought I heard earlier that we cannot broadcast our Zoom interview on television.
No, not like.
I thought that, I thought that's, I think it's a potential copyright issue that has people concerned about putting it on cable TV live.
Yeah, through cable TV.
Right.
But if to allow people to log in and watch it live would be, um, I'm not, I'm not sure how that could be managed. There's, there's a cap on, there's a cap on the number of people that can log in and if you don't allow people to log in, you have to make it available for everybody.
Right, and so I wonder if there are any open meeting law, if, if there's any open meeting law, um, guidance from the state on this type of situation you could look at, look for.
Well, as, as I said, it was, um, the guidance we've received from the Attorney General on this stuff is that as long as it's recorded and then broadcast, meaning made available for the public to watch, um, they're okay with it.
That works for me.
All right, well, I'll just do that. We'll tape it and air it.
Okay, all right, and Passover is Wednesday night.
Yeah, it's, I just looked it up, it starts at sundown Wednesday.
Yep.
So we'll try to stay away from Wednesday night.
I don't know if it's an issue necessarily, I just wanted to mention it.
Yeah.
Well, I think we need to be respectful. I think we need to be respectful of Passover, seriously.
I think if we can avoid it, we should.
Okay.
All right. So we'll, we'll post for every night at six o'clock and shoot for Monday, Tuesday.
Except Wednesday.
Yeah.
Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday.
Well, Friday's.
And then see how young. We try to, yeah, obviously Friday would be a last resort, but we'll try to get everybody Monday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Okay. All right.
All right, are there any other questions on this topic then?
You know, the only other thing I want to say is Nicole and Mike Long is that, uh, this was, you did a good job, uh, it was difficult though on the phone, not being able to hear you. Um, so if, if I interrupted anybody, I apologize, but, uh, maybe that's something we can work on for our next meeting.
Yeah, the, the phone, the phone was near Ron, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nicole and I had to yell a little bit louder, so, um, we'll see if we can have two phones or something next time, we'll, we'll try and make it a little bit cleaner.
Yeah, Mike hit a little more or something. We can hear you fine, though.
Adjourned, adjourned.
All right, I'll second that at 8:51. Uh, we'll do a roll call vote. Lindblom?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Hayes?
Yes.
Rendelini?
Yes.
Long, yes. All right, thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, good night, thank you. Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.